All right, everyone. It's 6 o'clock, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone could please take their seats. And of course, as always, if you're planning to speak on any item on or off the agenda, if you would please hand our city clerk a speaker card. That would help tremendously. All right, so with that, we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Armendaris.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing while Trevor Van Larr does the invocation.
Mayor, council, thank you so much. As I was kind of thinking about what to say tonight, I ran across some words I thought were very appropriate. This is John F. Kennedy's proclamation from 1963 for Thanksgiving. "Over three centuries ago, our forefathers in Virginia and Massachusetts, far from home in a lonely wilderness, set aside a time of Thanksgiving. On the appointed day, they give reverent thanks for their safety, for their health of their children, for the fertility of their fields, for the love which bound them together, and for the faith which united them with God. So too, when the colonies achieved their independence, George Washington, in the first year of his first administration, proclaimed a day of public Thanksgiving and prayer to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many favors of the Almighty God. And he called upon the people of the new republic to beseech him to pardon our national and our other transgressions, to promote the knowledge and the practice of true religion and virtue. And so too, in the midst of America's tragic civil war, President Lincoln proclaimed last Thursday of November 1863 as a day to renew our gratitude for America's fruitful fields, for our national strength and vigor, and for all our singular deliverances and blessings. Much time has passed since the first colonies came to the rocky shores and dark forests of an unknown continent; much time since President Washington led a young people into the experience of a nationhood; much time since President Lincoln saw our American nation through the ordeal of a fraternal war. And in these years, our population, our plenty, and our power have all grown. We give our humble thanks for this. Yet, as our power has grown, so too has our peril. Today, we give our thanks most of all for the ideals of honor and faith we inherit from our forefathers, for the decency of purpose, the steadfastness of resolve and strength of will, for the courage and the humility for which they possessed and which we must seek every day to emulate. As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. Let us therefore proclaim our gratitude to Providence for manifold blessings. Let us be humbly thankful for our inherited ideals, and let us resolve to share those blessings and those ideals with our fellow human beings throughout the world. On that day of thanks, let us gather in sanctuaries dedicated to worship and in homes blessed by family affection to express our gratitude for the glorious gifts of God. And let us earnestly and humbly pray that he will continue to guide and sustain us in the great unfinished tasks of achieving peace, justice, and understanding amongst all men and nations and of the ending misery and suffering wherever they exist." The words of John F. Kennedy, 1963. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, city clerks, report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, November 17th at 3:15 p.m. Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right, orders of the day, we have none. Employee introductions. Chief Wyatt, we have three new firefighter paramedics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Council. I'm going to introduce each one individually, and then they'll have them come up. We're actually missing the third one. He was injured on duty, and he'll be off for a bit. First of all, our first firefighter paramedic, Caesar Ruelas. Caesar was raised in the city of Gilroy and attended Antonio de Obano South Valley and Christopher High School, where he played a variety of sports, including wrestling, football, cross-country, track and field. After a ride-along with the Gilroy Fire Department back in 2014, Caesar knew his purpose in life was to become a firefighter medic for the city of Gilroy and to serve his diverse community. Caesar self-sponsored through a firefighter-one academy, attended the Mission College program, where I, Chief Wyatt, was his instructor, and gained experience as a 911 EMT in Salinas on an ambulance. He moved down to Los Angeles for a short period of time to pursue his passion of becoming a paramedic and attended the UCLA Paramedic Program. Caesar then returned to Salinas to gain experience as a 911 paramedic, best prepared for when this opportunity opened. Caesar recently moved to Morgan Hill after finding a great place to live, being close to his home as his parents and his older siblings continued to live in Gilroy. Caesar currently is in relationship with his girlfriend Cece. She teaches students with moderate-to-severe autism in San Jose. Although they have both stressful jobs, they both enjoy decompressing with the little things of life. They love to spend time with their two Boston Terriers, Jacks and Skittles, going out for evening bike rides and trips on the beach. He's very excited and blessed to be a firefighter paramedic for the city of Gilroy and looks forward to growing with our city and our department. I just wanted to say thank you to the Honorable Mayor and Council and for their department for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce firefighter-paramedic Ian Nicholas. Ian has always loved to travel and even more so now that he can share those adventures and new experiences with his family. He enjoys traveling off-road in the deserts of Baja California Peninsula to watch off-road races and eating delicious tacos and seafood. Ian is originally from Bend, Oregon, but between the ages of nine and 17, he lived in San Jose de Cabo, Baja Sur, Mexico. There, he was immersed in the Mexican culture and the Spanish language. It has been something that has benefited him in every aspect of his life. Ian currently lives in Vacaville with his wife Julie and their seven-year-old son Jack. Ian started his career path in public service in 2004. Spending eight years as an EMT, he attended Sacramento State University Paramedic Program. And for the past 10 years, Ian has worked as a paramedic in Sonoma, San Joaquin, and Contra Costa counties. In spring of 2022, Ian took a lateral educational opportunity to attend the Le Cordon Bleu in Paris, France, earning a grand diploma in both pastry and cuisine. I'll just say, we are delighted. Ian most recently attended the Santa Clara County Joint Fire Academy, graduating in the class of 22-2 as a firefighter-paramedic recruit. He looks forward to continuing his professional and personal and professional growth throughout his probation while serving the citizens of Gilroy. Madam Mayor, Honorable Council, I'd just like to thank you guys for the opportunity, especially Chief Wyatt, his command staff, and members of the Gilroy Fire Department for the leadership and the education and the growth that they're giving me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I got to say, Chief, you read that like you've never been to Cabo.
What's that?
You read that like you've never been to Cabo.
I have never been to Cabo, unfortunately. The last one I'd like to introduce, and of course, he can't be here tonight, is firefighter-paramedic Chris Channel. Ever since Chris was a child, he wanted to be a firefighter. Growing up as a Boy Scout and obtaining a status as an Eagle Scout only fueled his fire. Chris grew up playing 25 years of water polo through high school, as well as through the college's Solano Community, where he obtained both an AA in Liberal Arts and an AS in Fire Science. He also graduated with a bachelor's degree in Communication from San Jose State University. Chris has previously worked as a volunteer and reserve paramedic for both Susan City and Rio Vista Fire Departments for a total of three years. He has 10 years of service working in both Oakland and Fremont and in Alameda County as a 911 ambulance provider, participating as a SWAT medic, field training officer, paramedic preceptor, EMS instructor, and a member of the special events team, working directly with the Oakland A's, Raiders, and Golden State Warriors. Chris looks forward to his time with the Gilroy Fire Department and looks not only to serve as a firefighter medic, but also to assist and excel in training both fire and EMS. Chris looks to continue to serve and enhance the growing paramedic program that this department values and provides to the community every single day. And I'll just add, all three of these gentlemen have done a superb job for us as firefighter medics. Each of them have been involved in numerous cardiac arrests, shootings, all sorts of medical problems resulting in heart attacks and diabetes, as well as overdoses, and they performed remarkably well. We are ecstatic to have them as part of our team.
Thank you. All right, thank you and welcome all. All right, Jane Howard, would you please meet me at the podium? The day has actually come. Jane is retiring after 17 years of working for Visit Gilroy, running Visit Gilroy. So I'd like to read this proclamation because we, of course, are all very grateful and wish her well. Whereas Jane Howard has well-served the Gilroy community for over 17 years as the CEO, Executive Director of Visit Gilroy, and whereas Jane has made significant contributions to Gilroy in the areas of tourism, economic development, and philanthropy, all of which has improved the quality of life for the Gilroy community. And whereas Jane is retiring from the position of Visit Gilroy as CEO, Executive Director, with a sincere gratitude and appreciation of the Gilroy City Council for her years of dedicated service to our fine city, and whereas Jane has left a legacy of community service, professionalism, dedication, and a spirit of collaboration. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all of the citizens and employees of Gilroy, join in thanking Jane Howard for her commitment to her community and wish her well in retirement for years to come.
Yes, I really am retiring. It's been 11 months since I announced. So I'm just very pleased that our board of directors did such a thorough search to find the right person. And the individual is that gentleman right here, Frank Johnson. So, you know, in this season of gratitude, there's so much to be grateful for. I want to thank each one of you, council members, our city administrator, staff. I've worked with all of you. And one of the key words in this proclamation that really hits home for me is collaboration. I strongly encourage, please keep collaborating. That's how we get things done. I've had the blessing of working with all of you in different either committee or through the Gilroy Economic Development Partnership, but I really, really am so proud to have represented this community for so long and continue to see how, what's next in terms of how this community can move forward. Tourism is a big deal. And when we started out 17 years ago, we had one thing going, and that was the garlic festival. We've got so much now. We're now a recreation destination, thanks to all of you. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for all that we do. Thank you for this community, and we have lots more to move ahead for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. We had to do an official handshake there. We just both volunteered for Rock the Mock, and that was one of the important things that we were teaching young kids to do. And welcome to Frank Johnson, who is replacing Jane in that position. In your packet is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. I'm not going to read it, but that's in there for anyone who would like to see it. And next, we have a presentation to the council by Chair Manny Bandle of the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. All right, it is my honor today, as Chair of the Planning Commission, to present the commission activities over the past 12 months, 12 to 18 months. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to act as an advisory body to City Council in the review of subdivisions, planned unit developments, general plan amendments, and zone changes. The Commission also has discretionary decision-making authority over specified land use applications, including conditional use permits and variances from the city's development standards. The Planning Commission meets on the first Thursday of the month in council chambers. Currently, the Planning Commission includes members of myself as Chair, Anador Kushner, Vice Chair, Adeline Moreno, Stephanie Ellie, Joan Lewis, Adriana Leengart. I'd also like to thank John Doyle and Tom Fisher, who served on the Commission during the 2022 calendar year. And there's currently one vacant seat. In September 2021, the Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the city's objective design standards. These standards were adopted by City Council in October 2021 and help ensure that the city is compliant with the Housing Accountability Act. Over the last year, the Planning Commission also made recommendations to City Council regarding six subdivisions, which included a variety of entitlements and one standalone planned unit development. The Commission also approved four conditional use permits, two standalone architectural and site review permits. The Commission also received training from the city attorney in April 2022. Regarding our role as an advisory body, the specific powers granted to us under the city charter, the Brown Act, and other governmental codes and ethical standards affecting public bodies. Over the next few slides, I'd like to highlight some of the projects that were approved or recommended approval. The first one here is Plaza Alium, which is at the corner of 10th and Chestnut. It's currently in the early stages of grading and construction. It will serve our local residents and workforce, as well as visitors to the city. This prime location with freeway access will include a hotel, car wash, gas station, and a Chick-fil-A drive-thru. This is what the hotel would look like and the front of the corner of 10th and Chestnut. The project has been designed with attractive materials and includes a public art feature, representative of the city's history as the garlic capital. The next approval we did was the Cavalier Tap Room, which represents the first projects to activate gourmet alley and includes a rooftop deck, a desirable feature for downtown. It showcases how the city can preserve its historic buildings through adaptive reuse of a building's interior without modification to the historic exterior. The project required a conditional use permit approval from the Planning Commission since alcohol is ancillary to any small appetizer type of foods that might be served to patrons. The next project I'd like to highlight is the cold storage building. This required Planning Commission approval because the property is located in the city's Murray Las Animas Avenue Overlay Zoning District. As such, the project was required to comply with the city's industrial design guidelines and the Murray Las Animas Design Policy, which regulates landscaping, fencing, lighting, site design, and architectural design. The semi-truck fleet operating the project has a dual feature design where the cooling system of the trucks runs on electricity while parked at their facility. However, while they're on the road, they are run by diesel. The dual system maintains an adequate temperature for various cold products, including premium ice cream. The last project I'd like to highlight is the four-unit subdivision on Gurry's Avenue. The project completes the Hannah Court Planned Unit Development and was required to comply with the city's objective design standards. The new townhome range is from 19 to 2,000 square feet and provide an entry-level housing option for the city's smaller houses. Looking towards 2023, the Planning Commission will review revisions to the 2023 to 2031 housing element in response to comments from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. A few months later, the Commission will review a comprehensive update to the city's zoning ordinance to include more streamlined and transparent processes for project review, as well as bring ordinance in line with land development changes adopted in the 2040 general plan. These major milestones in the development of the city require review and recommendation by the Planning Commission before they are brought for council for a final decision. In addition, the council will review a variety of developmental projects, including projects that may impact a historic resource. The Planning Commission will also continue their training with a refresh of their duties and obligations, an overview of new and existing housing laws, and targeted training on the plans and policies that guide and direct our decision-making authority. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions, along with Sharon.
Thank you. Thank you, Manny, very much. Council, any questions?
Just a comment. Thank you, Manny. Thank you to you and all the commissioners for the work that you guys have done. And I was able to talk to a resident who's interested in possibly applying for a position. And obviously, she's been following the work that you guys have done, and she commends you all, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you.
Yes, the city is accepting now applications on a host of positions within several commissions, Planning Commission being one of them. So if anything interests you, please take a look and apply. Deadline is November 30th. Okay, council correspondence, we have none. Future council-initiated items?
Mayor, Madam Mayor, we still have, there's 3.2, which is the public comment.
Whoops, sorry. My apologies. How many? Okay, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Yes, I have six speaker cards at the moment.
All right.
The first is Maria Gomez, followed by Al Penaro, followed by Nancy Maciel.
Okay, so this is for items not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak. And if you heard your name called first, please go ahead and be at the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name's Maria Gomez. I'm here, so I'll be looking at my phone so I could keep my notes right and make sure I'm all right. On November 14th, we had our kitten get out on Church Street around 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. And by 6:00 p.m., we realized that she wasn't gone and missing. So we were rocking around the neighborhood, calling her name, trying to find her, make sure she wasn't hit by a car, various things. In the morning, we realized she had came home by 4:00 a.m. My son ran out to the garage, who was five, and informed me that there was something wrong with her and that she was really sick. I went out there and realized that she was extremely hurt. We weren't sure the extent or what was wrong with her. She looked like her jaw was broken. Her tongue was hanging from her mouth. We took her to a vet right away. And after getting to the vet, we found out more and more. Within the hours that went on through the day, we realized how gruesome it really was and that it wasn't an accident and that somebody had actually done this to the kitten. At about 4:00 p.m., I got a call from the vet. She let me know that as the kitten was sedated and clean, this is a four-month-old kitten that doesn't go outside very often. She had obtained blunt force trauma to her head and chest, including trauma to the eyes. Her tongue was grossly amputated with a blunt ligature, and her roof of her mouth was burned by a person. Because of the extent of the injuries, the vet recommended that we humanely euthanize her to end her suffering so that this did not go on. She also informed me that it was likely intentional, and there was nothing that she could think of or has ever seen that could cause these injuries. At that point, I called Gilroy PD and had them come out with animal control to make a report that this is going on. I found out not only was this going on, but this has been happening to multiple animals in the neighborhood, and nobody has been let know, alerted, that this is going on in our neighborhood. The GPD had told me that the person was likely a transient living 200 feet from our home, right next to a preschool and a Catholic school with children coming by them. They're aware that this person is mutilating, killing, and burning cats in this area. At least 10 of them has been happening. But for some reason, the community's not getting this out. Nobody is putting attention on this neighborhood. I would have loved moving into this neighborhood to know that this person was out there so that I could make sure that my family was safer. On Church and House, and there has been over 10 events where we have found mutilated or burned cats. This one was the worst. She returned home, and we were able to substantiate it all with a vet report. We did everything we could for her, and it still wasn't enough. I hope now that the community is alerted with this and that we can hopefully get this out to the community, and that Gilroy PD and the city starts to do something about what's going on in this neighborhood because these tennis acts are only going to escalate to human appearances. Thank you all.
Next speaker.
Al Penaro, followed by Nancy Maciel, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, Council. I have three items that I'd like to talk about real quickly. Number one, I want to thank Recology and Phil from Recology, as well as Jimmy from the city manager for working on something that Dion and I, back in the days, we tried to get rid of an ordinance which put the onus on landlords to pay somebody's garbage. The tenant was not paying for their garbage, and the landlord was automatically responsible for it. So I thank Recology and the city for working on that. And that says of today, hopefully, that will no longer be the case. Second, I'd like to ask the city to follow Recology's way of doing business. Every business in this community that gives a service, they're expected to collect for their own debt. So if somebody doesn't pay a service that they've provided, that person goes after that person that didn't pay and collects the debt. The city of Gilroy somehow has decided that they don't need to do that. In turn, they have an ordinance that says that if the tenant doesn't pay the water, the landlord is automatically going to be responsible. And if he doesn't pay it, he gets a lien put on his property. I want to remind the council that that tenant comes to the city with a contract which he signs at the city that says that he will pay for the water. That says nothing about the landlord. The city in itself then puts on an ordinance that says if he doesn't pay, the landlord's going to pay. I'm asking the city to revisit that and to do the same as Recology, collect for your own debt. It's your responsibility. You're providing it. Collect a deposit if you need to. Give them, you know, they've got 60 days. They don't pay, follow like everybody else. If not, then pretty soon Cable and PG&E were going to be responsible for it. So please look at that one more time. Last but not least, the fire ordinance. Please look at that. I'm sure you've gotten plenty of calls. I included, got cited for $1,000 bucks because supposedly a tenant of mine threw up illegal firework. Comes to find out, actually, he was in the middle of the street with a bunch of other folks around the neighborhood doing fireworks. The cop comes around, sees him, tells them that it was illegal. Instead of giving the guy or those people the citation, sends me the citation for $1,000 bucks. I've paid it. Now I'm appealing it. It was in your property. It was on your city street. Maybe you should send yourselves the citation instead of me because it was your property, not mine. So thank you very much. Please take a look at both of those if you could. Thank you again for your time. Appreciate it. I don't know why I get nervous up here. I've been up there all this time, and I still get nervous.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Nancy Maciel, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Rochelle Parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Nancy Maciel. I'm the Executive Director for the Gilroy Downtown Business Association. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that this Saturday, November 26th, is Small Business Saturday. I know you did your proclamation on that today. However, we do need the support of the Gilroy residents to have them come out and shop, dine, and drink in downtown. And next, I'd like to thank the Holiday Parade Committee for their hard work on planning this holiday parade, which is going to be December 3rd. From 3:00 to 5:00, we will have live entertainment, as we do every year. We'll have some vendors on Fifth Street. Local businesses will be open, so we hope that you'll come out and support them as well. And through our partnership with KW Gilroy, we will have our very own miracle on Martin Street. So that's something that KW has partnered with us, and they'll have a lot of live little goodies going on for the kids to do. We will also have photos with Santa after the parade, which is at 5:00 p.m. And that will be at KW Gilroy. So again, for all those little ones, please bring them out so that they can take their photos with Santa. We look forward to having the community in downtown, in the heart of Gilroy, for the beginning of the holiday season. Lastly, on behalf of the Gilroy Downtown Business Association, I'd like to thank the city of Gilroy for their support of the citywide holiday banners that were put up along with our tree that was put up just yesterday. And we will have this year's grand marshal be Sam Bozo. So we hope that, again, you can all make it out. We know some of you will be participating, so we look forward to that. know some of you will be participating, so we look forward to that. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and to wish you all a very nice Thanksgiving with your family. So, thank you for the time again.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Ron Kirkish, followed by Cheryl Parks, followed by Stephanie Elly.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, community. I'm sorry to hear about what happened to Maria Gomez's kitty, but it's been happening to other people's pets, too. Who would torture and mutilate and burn a three-month, four-month-old kitten? Who would put literature on their tongue and cut it and do horrible damage? The fact is, there's a link between animal abuse and violent crimes, and that's what we need to worry about, too. What kind of person would do that? And I'm going to lead you up a list of names of people who did exactly that. Ted Bundy, Richard Chase, Carol Edward Cole, Jeffrey Dahmer, Albert DiSalvo, Dennis Radar, Gary Ridgway. Those are people that abuse animals like this. I think we have a problem in Gilroy with this issue, and I think it needs to be resolved and resolved quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Parks. It's come to our attention that there's a serial animal abuser in Gilroy. Community members, investigations have discovered that as of March, there have been multiple reports of dead and mutilated cats and animals that have been found along the creek beds where the homeless encampments are located by the bridges of Church Street, Sixth Street, and Tenth Street. It's unclear if there's only one serial animal abuser or if there's more than one sick, demented individual responsible for the torture of these innocent defenseless animals, given the expanse of the prey area. There is a known suspect, but there's no evidence to tie him to the heinous crimes. There has been a concerted effort by Gilroy Police Department involving, or there needs to be a concerted effort by Gilroy Police Department involving the entire police force rather than just referring these incidents to the Quality of Life officers who deal with the homeless population or the animal control officer who deals with animal-related issues. When Antonio, who was the first citizen to start reporting about this, spoke to two police officers in October, they were unaware that an arrest had been made, nor were they aware of any animal mutilations or deaths. There was arrest made, but evidently it was unrelated to this. And when this person was away, the mutilation stopped. When the other homeless, my neighbor, my neighbor on Saturday was out there. It's like citizens are investigating. We're outraged. And the homeless tell them that we're afraid. We know who it is, and we're afraid. And they said that this person lives in an encampment behind Foothill Preschool. That's scary. And they said they've told the animal, I'm not sure if it was, I think it was the Quality of Life officers, that they know this person likes to kill cats. So, I wholeheartedly believe that Gilroy needs to alert the public. If I lived in that neighborhood, I would want to know ahead of time. Do NICSOL. You don't have to say for sure it happened, but there's reports that people are finding burned animals or be on alert. People might check their Ring cameras to look for suspicious activities. I feel like we should be proactive instead of reactive. We need to engage every resource there is to catch this monster, and we need to do it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm a little upset. Okay. I'm part of the community helping to investigate this, and we believe that we see a pattern of incidents dating back to 2021, but this could go back further. Our neighbors have been reporting these incidents to the police for over a year, but they haven't really had a lot of response until last month. You know, animal torture and murder is a crime. And again, no warnings are out. We're talking on Nextdoor. We're talking amongst ourselves. It's better to have something come officially. We're frustrated. We look to our police force and our city council to hopefully, and our city to make this a priority. I know Carol Marks has reached out on her own to engage in this effort. One of you, to see the photos of these animals and see where they were found. The community wants to know what the police's action plan is going to be, you know, what those updates are. We want them public, responsiveness, and reports for incidents when they're called in. We suspect that the perpetrator or perpetrators might be using traps to capture their victims. And actually, I got a text from one of the community members saying that that's been confirmed, that those traps have been found. And the victim, the known victims include cats, wild animals, and raccoons and birds. Some of these victims include an orange kitten mutilated and burned body was found and reported at Church and Houston area. The police would not come out indicating it was private property, and nothing could be done. Bags found at Uves Park and Laurel contained bodies of two cats and a bird. The orange cat had been decapitated. Raccoons were found mangled and dumped with bags filled with their own feces. We know a cat's body has been found burned last month. A body of an animal was skinned and dumped on a lawn. Cat was found with a broken back, and another cat was shot with a BB and expired from its own injuries. The pattern of cruelty includes, but not limited to, physical disabling injuries such as broken jaws, backs, and shoulders, mutilation, decapitation, skinning, torture, shooting, and burning. And we're unsure if the animals are still alive when the burning takes place. We need help. We need people who have skills and resources to look into this. I can't imagine what these animals are going through. We just said goodbye to our German Shepherd. He was a victim of severe abuse. He almost died, and he suffered from it for the rest of his life. And I'm so grateful. His perpetrator dumped him at the pound, and he eventually became part of our family. Please help find this person. Thank you.
Any others?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. That concludes public comment, and the city is absolutely aware of these issues, and our city administrator will address where we are with that in the city administrator report. Okay. I think I was on future council-initiated items. Seeing none. The consent-
Madam Mayor, we need to go back to item four, which is reports of council members.
Oh, gosh. My, sorry, my agenda was off. Okay. Councilmember Braco.
That's the report.
Councilmember Armandares.
I have a couple things, Mayor. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to the community members who have lost pets to this. I've heard reports from folks who lost their animals to this, and I hope that we will be following up soon and beefing up our investigation and catching this person. I'd also like to offer my heartfelt condolences to the friends and family members of the victims of the Club Q attack that took place in Colorado Springs this past weekend, to the survivors and the entire Colorado Springs community. It was a tremendous, horrendous hate crime that stung just a little bit more because it coincided with International Transgender Remembrance Day, and I think our community feels it deeply whenever there's a mass shooting. So, my condolences to that community. In terms of committees, I attended the Implementation Board meeting last week for the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency. We discussed the Public Advisory Committee, finalizing the new Pacheco Pass land bridge, the design of that. It was funded with 100% grants, and what it's going to do is provide a land bridge for our local wildlife to avoid the dangers of them being killed on the road and to help also avoid the dangers of drivers when there are animals killed on the road. It'll help protect our local elk, bobcats, mountain lions, et cetera, who tragically have no other route. There was also a report that $6 million in grant funding was received for land acquisition, which will help us with protecting and preserving our local green spaces. And then for the Caltrans Committee, there are new trains, and riders will be invited soon at the beginning of the year to experience the new trains, the new Caltrans trains. There has been funding set aside from the state for the electrification. Our local area applied, and those awards will be announced in January. There will be service changes over the next two weeks, which are related to the different phases of electrification, and some corridor crossing improvements. There's 23 projects throughout our area, our Caltrans area, that are going to begin with the new year. So, we need to look out for those building projects as we travel through our community. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
No report, but my condolences also go out to all the families affected by this, and we will find that perpetrator, no doubt. The community will come together, and this will end.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, likewise, my condolences to everybody that has lost a pet. This past weekend on November 19th, I had the honor of being a keynote speaker at the 2023 World Kindness Day at the Santa Clara County Convention Center. And for those that aren't familiar with World Kindness Day, it's celebrated on November 19th. World Kindness Day is a global day that promotes the importance of being kind to each other, to yourself, and to the world. During my speech, I was able to talk about and showcase Gilroy and all the great people of Gilroy and wonderful collaborative projects and events that we continue to work on and celebrate. So, I was honored to speak on behalf of the residents of Gilroy, and they know who we are now. So, I was honored to do that. During that time, I had also had the honor of speaking with several high-tech CEOs who are very, very interested in possibly building some projects out in Gilroy, but also we're going to connect them with the president, Gavlin College, as one of the projects we talked about was possibly making Gavlin College a high-tech hub for students. So, I'm looking forward to that meeting that we're going to have with the college president and the high-tech companies. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember LaRoma Yost.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. The Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority is the local group that, or regional group, I should say, that coordinates emergency communications equipment among the different police and law enforcement and safety jurisdictions throughout our county. I represent the city on that board. We had our final meeting of the year just last week. We are already planning for 2026 for the World Cup when it comes here to the United States and to North America, but also more specifically, a little closer to home, right up the road at Levi's. So, similar to the way we were planning well in advance of the Super Bowl, we'll be doing a similar type of planning for that event to make sure that our emergency and law enforcement responders can talk to one another during that event. Additionally, just two other quick thank-yous. Thanks to those who were part of the Veterans Day Parade a couple of Fridays ago. That was a great, great event, really nice to see. And then also, thanks to those volunteers who participated in the volunteer appreciation dinner last Thursday. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'll start like some others. I mean, some of us can't even speak of such horrific acts that happen to animals. So, I am glad that Jimmy will be able to report on where the city is with that. We had a Veterans Day Parade last week to celebrate Veterans Day. That will hopefully become an annual event. That is something the Veterans Hall is trying to bring back and certainly well-deserving attention to our veterans. We also celebrated Arbor Day, planted trees at Sunrise Park. Councilmember LaRoma Yost mentioned our Commissioner Appreciation Dinner. All council members were invited to all of these things, by the way. Okay. City Administrator Jimmy Forbus and I, and Fire Chief Wyatt and Police Chief Espinoza, and our Deputy Public Works Director Matt Jones, all visited a temporary housing place in San Francisco with 70 temporary housing units to explore what that looks like and what the services are that are provided there. Now, of course, those services are provided by San Francisco, but it's a starting point for us to start to explore what are the questions that we need to ask. So, I just want everyone to know that we're on that track to see what we can do. And lastly, Digital Nest is now in Gilroy and celebrated their eighth birthday. That is a nonprofit that provides space for youth and young adults to learn technology. And people who are there to help instruct them and help guide them are provided free of charge to the users. So, they are not free, of course. Somebody is paying for them. But they are very large and supportive donors that are up in Silicon Valley, and as well as community donations as well. So, Digital Nest is here in Gilroy now. It's been about six months, and they're hopefully here to stay. All right? That's my report. Now, am I properly on the consent calendar?
I have a council-initiated item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to get a report from staff on the fireworks, how it went, how many citations, how many have been paid. And I'd also like to get a report on the water bills. How many? We don't even know how many people are being charged for their tenants' water bills, and how long of a wait between when they stop paying for it?
Jimmy, do you want to speak to the water? Okay, you can do both. Okay.
I do believe we have on the January Matrix for Council a report back on last year's fireworks citations and activities. We're finishing up the appeals process that on well, so that would be timely. That's doable, and we have that scheduled. Utility bills as well. I would like to ask if council would be okay with waiting on that. We are going to come to council with the new rate structure and new rate policies. And as you've seen, as you'll see later tonight, Recology has kind of changed course about adding these costs. We may do the same thing. I just don't know yet, but I'd like to do all that at once. So, if it's okay with council, I'll make a commitment to bring that back, and we'll bring the rate analysis back, which is in the first quarter of next year.
Is that okay? I would support that, too. So, great. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm out of order. Yes.
Can I ask a question? I know you mentioned that the city administration talked about the issue with animals and abuse. That will be in his report later on? Okay. I'm just wondering, City Manager, one of the pieces I'm hoping that you cover is if and when the perpetrator is arrested, what's the consequences, you know, that we can hand down? Because obviously, you know, the way our law is, sometimes, you know, you're arrested and you're set free 30 minutes later. So, if you can address that later as well, I appreciate it.
Okay. Consent calendar. I'm going to start with asking if anyone would like to remove something from the consent calendar. No? And then before anybody makes any motion, do we have any public comment on anything on the consent calendar?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, closing public comment?
I'll move approval.
All right. Councilmember LaRoma Yost moved approval, seconded by Councilmember Tovar. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lea Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right. That passed unanimously with one absent. That brings us to 8.1, bids and proposals. Awarded contract, two. I'm going to say MIG Inc. for Justice Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Consultation Services in the amount of $114,905. And Jimmy is going to be giving us the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. This is for the Justice Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Policy Consultant Contract Award. This was a council-initiated item back in September 2021, and so we've done a lot of things to get to this point. And returned on March 7, 2022, as council discussed and directed us to pursue that policy for not only our city boards and commissions, but also the city council. And then I extended that to the city organization as a whole. So, one of the things that we learned very quickly in this is that we really don't have any in-house expertise in this area, and it's something that you definitely want to get right from the start. So, it was basically what we found in a lot of other communities, is they brought somebody on board who could help guide through this process and to- and to ensure that, again, it's done correctly. So we formulated a City Jedi Committee, which included representatives from every department within the city to help steer these efforts. And so the result of that work was a request for proposals that was issued on September 9, 2022, just a couple of months ago. And the city received 15 proposals, which tells you there's a lot of groups out there doing this kind of work. And so we were very encouraged to see that many, many consultants were interested in helping us with our project. The selection committee had a subcommittee of three reviewers who looked at all 15 and rated them. And MIG's proposal actually was scored the highest with two of the three reviewers being given, they given imperfect scores. In your packet is actually an example of a product that MIG has completed. And so you can see the kind of quality that they do and the end result, which we believe will be similar to what we'll, we'll get in this process. The MIG team is six assigned with very levels of various levels of involvement. And they expect about 837 hours of labor for this project too. So it is, it is a pretty significant undertaking, but one that we're excited about. The firm has done several projects in California, including Caltrans, Santa Clara County, Salinas, San Jose, Sacramento County, Los Angeles and Marin County, and they are based up in Berkeley. So they are relatively local, Bay Area. There are four phases to this project. It is a 24-month-long project, was, was like I stated, is quite intense. But the first part is data gathering, so we will be interviewing staff, council, community and inter-agency members and looking at our current policies. Second phase would be to draft, develop a draft policy and implementation plan, including training, training with staff and council. As you're probably aware, we do have mandated trainings for anti-harassment, things like that. And so this would, is envisioned to be that kind of training that we would do annually or buy it annually, depending on the implementation plan. We would finalize definitions, statement, goals and strategies. We would conduct a staff forum and community review events, and then a final policy framework developed and additional training for the organization. And then the last part is it's a living document, it's a living program, it needs monitoring and progress reports throughout and performance monitoring, monitoring and adjustments to implement over the last eight months of the project. And all that would be shared with council as a, you know, a continual report. The deliverables, after all this work, what are we actually going to have in our hands to utilize? And so there'll be a summary document reporting the findings of the analysis. There'll be the development of a training workbook, training sessions for staff and a meeting with the City Council. And then the final Jedi Policy Framework and Plan, and then quarterly implementation reports, meetings and surveys to continue the program. It is definitely an ongoing, long-term commitment. The alternatives tonight, council could accept, modify or reject the proposal. But the staff, staff is recommending that $114,905 be awarded out of the general fund. No budget amendment is necessary at this time, and we would recover some of those costs via overhead for sewer water, things like that, other departments. So the last is to award a contract and more. Iyako Funko Goldsmann, I am MIG for Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Consultation Services in the amount of 114,905. I'd like to thank Bryce Atkins, Assistant to the City Manager, who's really headed this, this effort to get us to this point. And both him and I would be happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, any questions? Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, do, do we have any idea how much this is going to end up costing with training and everything for all of our employees?
We don't, because we don't know to what extent the hours, you know, would be recommended as part of the program. So the actual physical dollars are here in the 114, but time spent and items like that, no, we have no, we have no numbers to provide you.
And what if we did nothing?
It would cost us nothing.
But it doesn't put us in any liability or anything?
Well, I, I would say that this is work that's been done by many cities and many communities already. So we're not looking at it so much from a liability standpoint. We're looking at more for a better organization, more inclusive. And so there, there is a cost to it that is not in the dollars and cents, but it's also something I feel that we, we should do.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy, for your work on this and Bryce and the rest of staff. I appreciate using the GEAR surveys. Like, I think that's really important. It's work that's been, you know, in the works for like 40 years. So I appreciate bringing that to the table for our community. I have a couple of questions. Within the proposal, it says other city efforts in terms of assessments and trainings and such, would that include commissioner work as well as city staff?
I, I think it would, because I think the thing that we learned is that you just can't pick pieces of the organization to do this training and to do this. So it would be definitely for boards and commissions, council, staff, maybe even volunteers.
Including their input?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, excellent. And then how will key stakeholders and community partners be determined?
Bryce, do you want to answer that one?
So Mayor and Council, one of the first items that we have with the, with consultants, the kickoff meeting where that's going to be explored and discussed. Ultimately, they're going to speak to council and as part of that process, engage with council and some of the commissions. And they're going to take your input as well to see if that scope needs to change. So at this point, council will be providing input as far as stakeholders, it identifies as well as city staff. And they had already identified some of the proposals they had already queued in as potential candidates, but they weren't firm until they've gone through that kickoff process and consult with the city and the council.
Thank you.
And then last thing, can we, I noticed that in the narrative, it doesn't include, it doesn't deliberately include LGBTQ plus, Black and Indigenous people. It just says people of color. Can we put that? I think it's, it's important to be intentional.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions at this time, I'd like to ask if we have any members of the public who would like to comment?
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment and ready for a motion if there are no other questions.
I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
And this is a digital vote that council can do.
So then I don't need to state it again? Okay, so that's one, two, three. That's okay. It doesn't say, right. It says Tovar voted no.
No, I'm second.
Yeah. I don't know.
I will change that. I'll do a roll call vote. How about that?
Okay. And wait, to be, to be clear, the motion was made by Councilmember Armendaris and seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
Yeah.
Okay, and now, all right.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Leo Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, so that passes with one no, one absent. All right. Item nine. Public hearings, this is 9.1. Adoption of an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy, adopting a franchise agreement with Recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services, and a finding that its action in adopting the ordinance is exempt from review under CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15061B3. And in that, the proposed ordinance will continue an existing state-mandated program for the protection of public health and the environment, and none of the circumstances in CEQA Guideline Section 15300.2 apply. Bryce, if you would, give the report, please, on 9.1 and 9.2, but we'll come back to them separately for voting. Thanks. Okay.
Yes, I'm getting mayor and council members of the public. As the mayor mentioned, we are here to discuss essentially two ordinances, but for the same agreement. So the urgency ordinance is intended to put the agreement to effect immediately. And the regular ordinance is to sustain the action once the urgency ordinance expires. And there's a specific reason we're doing that, and that will be discussed later on in this presentation. So as mentioned, the agreement is the same for both items. So we're planning to make the presentation just once for both and asking council to go ahead and have the public hearings and adoptions handled separately as we proceed forward. So to begin with background, solid waste is required service that the city provides through our franchise agreements. In this case, proposed with Recology, and historically, the last agreement was also with Recology. The city charter governs franchise agreements by requiring two things, that the franchise is adopted by ordinance and that the franchise is limited to 25-year terms. The previous long-term franchise agreement we had was adopted back in 1997. The city and Recology entered into negotiations on a new franchise agreement, but unfortunately, it was delayed with COVID and with also the, the experience of the state adopting new regulations. We'll discuss those as well. And so these challenges and negotiations necessitated an interim agreement, something that would cover the gap between when the franchise of 1997 franchise agreement had to end and when a new one could come in. So that interim agreement is set to expire December 31st of this year. So since the 1997 franchise agreement, several laws have been passed relating to solid waste. These include mandatory commercial recycling, mandatory commercial organics recycling, and then most recently, SB 1383 took the organics recycling and amped it up to cover for everybody, including food waste recovery programs, education enforcement for all organics, forced recyclables and composting purchases for cities. And then also additionally, for cities and other local agencies to implement enforced provisions the state gave, basically gave down to us, including inspections and record keeping. So it's a pretty heavy lift. Overall, the agreement maintains services that are currently being provided. It does add a few new services that we'll discuss in more detail later, but some of them include bulky item pickups, special waste collection requests for the city and mattress disposal events. Recology is, under this agreement, taking on the maximum ASB 1383 role that it can legally perform. And also is aiding the city with compost procurement efforts that are imposed on the city by the state. And there are also additional increase in rates, and we'll cover that here shortly. So some of the key changes, the term of this agreement is from December 1, 2022 through June 30, 2033, so basically 10 years and seven months. There is a meet and confer on an extension in 2031, so based on previous experience, it's ample amount of time to get that done before, before that term ends. It also implements the legislation, latest legislation, so the three-car system will remain, but there are additional activities. Exhibit C of the agreement identifies those specific activities, most around SB 1383 compliance requirements. As you may recall from previous presentations, SB 1383, we're currently in an education phase for the next, for next year. And then we shift into enforcement in 2024. Recology is implementing, like I said, the maximum activities that can be delegated to a franchise hauler under the law. So rate increases. There is proposed a 13.12% increase effective, commencing after December 1st. What this means to rate payers is a monthly rate increase that will range from either 97 cents, the lowest end, up to $12.90. The $12.90 is a multi-car residential on a hillside property rate, but that is the highest rate that's going to be experienced. There are, were no rate increases in July of 2022 due to negotiations. So what we have is a basis of increase is about 3%, adjusted for the normal inflation that would have occurred July 1st, about 2% for Recology, based on staff and resources they're going to require for their side of SB 1383 compliance. About 4% for new bulky item collection program that we talked about, and almost 5% in changes in recycling market revenues. So as, as most remember, for the longest time, recycling materials, you would get paid for that. Unfortunately, at this point, it actually costs the hauler money to process recyclables for the city. Future increases will be formula-driven, similar to the previous franchise agreement as far as the formula. The weighted amounts for the formula in this one include the Consumer Price Index, fuel cost increases, refuse disposal costs, recyclables processing, and then exceptional costs that may be incurred year to year. And then in the franchise agreement, Exhibit 2A has a sample example calculation for anybody that's interested in seeing how that would play out. So some key service level changes that we have. So performance audits. In the previous agreement, we were granted one performance audit every five years. With this new agreement, performance audits are on demand. And so there's, any cost would be, exceptional cost would be included, but we can run a performance audit on the franchise hauler anytime the city desires. There are fees paid to the city, the franchise agreement and the administrative, I'm sorry, the franchise fee and administrative fee have not changed, but we do have $110,000 in this contract that wasn't in the previous contract for regulatory and consultant assistance. There's homeless encampment refuse collection. They will place and recover trash bins for encampment cleanups. They don't do the groundwork, but they are, will provide the bins, and then of course, any, any cost from that would be exceptional cost for the rate, rate adjustments. There'll be two bulky item pickups this year. This is an increase over the single spring cleanup event that was in the 1997 agreement. There'll be two new collection, mattress collection events that will be held. They will also be assisting us with the procurement of required compost. So under SB 1383, the city is required to secure a certain amount of compost for its use each year on a form that's driven by the state. And so Recology is going to provide and help us acquire that compost, and those costs would be included in the exceptional costs. There is a solid waste implementation fee. There's no amount declared. The intent of this is only that it's used in the case that a need is, is a need for additional funding to meet those statement and legal requirements are found, and that's to help us maintain compliance only. There's outreach, education, enforcement support for SB 1383. Liquidated damages, there's increased amounts for any failure to perform for, on the, for the waste hauler. There are annual caps, but again, want to point out, there is no history of ever having to use the liquidated damages with, with Recology. Termination service, and this was alluded to earlier, there are no more liens in this agreement. So instead of placing a lien on the property owner, there will be granted a certain amount of time and arrears to make their payments, otherwise it ceases service. And then the code enforcement essentially at that point for a literal removal process if it gets to that point. For transfer requests, so this is a $50,000 payment to the city. Should Recology decide to transfer or sign the agreement to someone else, to pay the city for the staff time in order to review those, that transfer agreements in that process. And then finally, insurance coverage is increased from $5 million to $10 million, as well as additional language from our, just pooled authority for insurance coverage. So fiscal impacts of the franchise is something that we assess and analyze. And so looking at some of the impacts, we have the impacts of heavy vehicles on the streets. So obviously, certain collector and arterial streets are designed for heavy vehicles, but a lot of our surface residential streets are not designed for heavy use. So the franchise fee that we receive, the 4% is intended to offset, at least in part, that impact. We are not, there's no increase in the franchise fee percentage proposed. There's staff time to manage the contract, and that's the administrative fee that we collect of 5% to pay for the costs associated with it. Again, there's no, there's no recommendation or no increase included to that 5%. We do have in the new SB 1383 requirements implementation, those are cost items for new programs that will be required. We do have the implementation fee, as we mentioned in there, to provide that funding to flex and to cover those, those requirements in order to maintain compliance. Additionally, we have consultants and outside expertise, $110,000 that was mentioned earlier, to help us with, if we need to get consultants or outside expertise in order to help ensure compliance requirements. And then finally, the composting, again, we don't know the amounts that will be required in future years, but Recology is going to be assisting with us. And that is a, there's a financial component to that, but it is, again, saving us from being fined and cited by the state. So finally, we also look at the reasonable fee relationship comparison, so looking at other cities in the region, what they have. Some cities do participate in a joint powers authority, others charge the fees to, to, to the, to, you know, property owners or customers, and then hire the haulers from that revenue. So these are the percentages on the screen, including the staff report for franchise agreements. So Gilroy, 9% is on the lower end. We do have like, for example, Santa Clara at the bottom has 3% at the low end, but can go up to 18% depending on its diversionary rate. But you have, you know, the highest one we found was Belmont, 26% combined. So we're, we're on the lower end of, of these, these fee-based percentages. So we're looking, as I mentioned, both at a, at a regular ordinance and an urgency ordinance. And so the regular ordinance won't become effective until January 4, 2023. So it has to go through the first reading process, I'm sorry, the introduction and, and reading tonight, and then a adoption December 5, and by the charter, it cannot take effect until 30 days after. There's two reasons for the urgency ordinance. One is that the quarterly business cycle timing requires the effective date of agreement to be December 1st. It's a business process for the city and Recology. Additionally, interim franchise agreement ends December 31st. So if we don't approve the interim, and don't approve the urgency agreement, then when that interim franchise agreement drops, we'll have about two to four business days of service interruption. And then finally, the urgency ordinance essentially allows service to continue until that regular ordinance becomes effective. So in order to, to make that finding, there are, there are a couple of reasons that, that this is finding is, is being recommended to you. First, the city is required to provide the solid haul, the solid, solid waste hauling services to protect health and safety and meet legal requirements. The charter requires a franchise agreement for the service to be, for the service to be adopted by ordinance. And the city charter makes service without a franchise agreement a misdemeanor, which would mean that the waste hauler would have to stop at December 31st. And then this urgency ordinance will allow the continuation of essential services until the regular ordinance. the regular ordinance becomes effective. Under the California, California Environmental Quality Act, this is exempt under the common sense exemption, as mentioned in the, in the title of the item, that the proposed ordinance continues an existing state mandated program, and none of the circumstances of guideline section fifteen, three hundred point two apply. So the fiscal impact, we're looking at approximately two hundred and one thousand four hundred estimated revenue for the general fund, a hundred and ten thousand of this is the regulatory consulting fee, and this is an increase. And then ninety-one thousand four hundred from the thirteen point one-two percent increase in fees, collecting that, basically nine percent of the thirteen percent increase. No current method is available to fully determine the net fiscal impact with all the negative impacts of the service, like on the streets and roads, et cetera, with the fiscal and other benefits that we have. But the costs for the future years are hard to evaluate as well from the new laws and increasing demands that we have from solid waste services that are increasing nowadays from year to year. So the next steps with, with approval, the city clerk's office will then complete the required public noticing. The city administrator designated will then execute the agreement, introduce the regular ordinance adopting the franchise agreement, and then ordinance that would be introduced, again, if introduced and, and adopted by council, would then go to the, sorry, December fifth regular meeting to rescind the lien, I'm sorry, to adopt the franchise agreement. And then we'll also be introducing an ordinance on December fifth, regular meeting to rescind the lien process, as I mentioned before. So for delinquent bills, we'll remove that from the city code. So recommend actions are to hold the public hearing and adopt the urgency ordinance, and also then hold the public hearing and adopt the regular ordinance as well. And that completes the presentation. Happy to field any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. Okay, before we move on to questions, because we haven't seen him in so long and he's here with us tonight, I would like to point out that former top dog of recology, Phil Couche, is with us in the off, in the audience. So thank you for being here, Phil. When I first saw you, I got to say, wasn't sure who you were. I'm like, wait, wait, it's been so long.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. Okay, I should have asked this before, ex parte communications. So I'm asking for nine point one and nine point two, if anyone has any ex parte communications to disclose. None, okay? Seeing none, then do we have any questions for Bryce before I go to the, before I open the public hearing? All right? Then I'm going to open the public hearing at seven twelve and ask if we have any speakers.
Madam Mayor, I have one speaker card, but that's for nine point two for the regular ordinance. So once we close this public hearing, then we can go to nine point two.
Okay, so I'll close this at seven twelve. And I'm going to move on then to possible action before I go to nine point two. Okay? So yeah, unless there's any more discussion, I'm looking for a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive any further readings.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Leroy Munoz. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. No, go ahead.
An urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy adopting a franchise agreement with recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services and a finding that it is action in adopting the ordinance is exempt from the review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA guideline section one five zero six one B three, common sense exemption, in that the proposed ordinance will continue an existing state mandated program for the protection of public health and environment, and none of the circumstances in SEQA guideline sections one five three zero zero point two apply.
Okay, and then next would be a motion to adopt an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy approving a franchise agreement with recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Armandares. Roll call vote.
Councilmember?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we had public, public speakers.
No, we do on nine point two. This is still nine point one.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, and that has its five affirmative votes, so. All right, so now we're on nine point two. We've already had the report. I've already asked about ex parte communications. So now I'm going to open the public hearing at seven fifteen and invite the speaker.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker card, and that's David Mathisak.
Hey, my neighbor. Good to see you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, City Council, and my neighbor, Fred. Yes, I have a couple of technical concerns about this franchise agreement. Number one, I really like the bulk pickup. I think that's a great improvement. It's something we needed for many years. I'm concerned, though, that it includes the mattresses. If you read through the detail of, it includes the mattresses and box springs, and I think we need a separate pickup for the mattresses and box springs. We are underserved here in Gilroy. If you go to Hollister or Watsonville or Salinas, they have a trailer parked at their landfill site, and you can drop it off anytime that the site is open. We need that same service here in Gilroy. It's a federal program, or excuse me, a national program that's run by the state called Bye Bye Mattress, and I've asked the city administrator and recology multiple times to try to join that program, and they have not. This is, as I said, this is a step in the right direction, and we've had very successful mattress pickups here at City Hall, over four hundred mattresses on one of them. But we need to be able to drop those off regularly, not just once or twice a year when you can call. So that's, that's one. Second point I wanted to make is that I, it's really good what you're doing with the organic waste pickup from the commercial sites, the restaurant pickup. But I have a concern that we have a lot of pop-up trucks and tents downtown and Miller Park and other areas, and they're not going to be part of this, as far as I can tell. So we need to come up with another way to make sure that those vendors are part of this process. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot more recyclables and organics are not going to be picked up, even though we have a lot of money being put into this. It's just, we have a, there's going to be a number of places that are going to slip through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
No, there's speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
If you would like to speak, you'd need to let the city clerk know.
You can, sir, you can actually speak and then provide me the speaker card afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Mike Kelly. I'm the general manager at recology South Valley. Now, I took Phil Couche's place after he retired a year ago.
All right.
I just want to comment on the mattresses. This new agreement does have two mattress pickup events that will be held at the, the recology facility on Pacheco Pass Highway. We will be working out the details of that as, as we move forward in this agreement, but twice a year, there will be an event at recology's facility to have mattresses picked up or dropped off at our facility. We won't pick them up, they can be dropped off at our facility. They will be publicized at our facility twice a year.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask you one question?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you for sharing that. And just sort of sticking with the, the mattress program, and thank you, Dave, for your comments. Yeah, and I know they've been very successful here, and, you know, to have two events is wonderful. But just to sort of touch on the concern that was brought up regarding that it may be something, a program that we would need year, 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 year long in regards to if, if we see that, yeah, both events, we see a large dump off, is there a possibility that we could look at possibly incorporating more of these drop-offs?
Of course, yeah. And any, if, if we determine two isn't enough, I would work with Bryce or whoever at, at that point in time to determine what else we can do with the city.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Right.
Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Along those same lines, I'm just curious, why, why aren't we doing the Bye Bye Mattress? Because yes, it's great to have them, the drop-offs two times a year, but we see mattresses along our roadways all the time, and it's so expensive to dump them off at the dump. Could we have something out at your plant where people could just go whenever and drop them off?
At, at the recology facility?
Mm-hmm.
Our concern there is the amount that we would, we would receive, we couldn't necessarily plan for. The, the reason we had, we identified two annual events is to allow us to have the proper equipment there that will be needed to haul those mattresses away. We don't really have a place to store them necessarily, but with a planned event, we can have the, the equipment there ready to go, people drop them off, we'll be able to load them into the trailers and then have our vendor take those away.
Would you be willing to look into the other cities that have that program and see how they're managing it?
Of course, yeah. I mean, I can look into, generally, they're, they're dropping them off at, at a, either a landfill or another facility that, that may have the equipment already at the facility and able to process it there, but I will reach out to other communities, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing the public hearing at seven twenty-one, is what I show, and ask, seeing if we have a, and wanting to point out for those who didn't notice in the staff report, that staff will be being, bring, if this moves forward, if we pass this, then staff will be bringing back to us for our consideration rescinding an ordinance from nineteen ninety-nine that was leaning the property owner's property for someone else's unpaid garbage bill. Okay.
Mayor, move for approval.
Okay, so that would be then a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive any future reading. Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bracco. Okay, and roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, and that passes, and so go ahead and read it.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy adopting a franchise agreement with recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services and a finding that it is action in adopting the ordinance is exempt from the review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA guideline sections one five zero six one B three, common sense exemption, in that the proposed ordinance will continue an existing state mandated program for the protection of public health and the environment, and none of the circumstances in SEQA guideline section one five three zero zero dot two apply.
All right, thank you. And next would be a motion to introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy approving a franchise agreement with recology South Valley for solid waste hauling services.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Marks. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right. Thank you all. Nine point three, proposed rezoning tentative map and architectural and site review to develop three point three seven acres with a forty-five unit townhouse project known as Royal Way Town Homes. I'd like to first ask for ex parte communications. Anything to share? Okay? Councilmember Armandares?
I spoke to residents, not the developer.
Okay. Councilmember Marks?
I spoke with the developer and the residents, but nothing more to, more to report.
And no for Councilwoman Tovar? No. Okay, so I did too, but there was stuff, so I don't know if you guys talked about it. For, for me, the, the, yeah, the developer presented the project, nothing new there, but the residents that I spoke to shared concern about the fence that's going to be there being strong enough and sturdy enough, so sharing that with the, with the rest of you. Okay. Staff report, Craig. And this is, right, Craig, senior planner for the city of Gilroy, so no one thinks you're the developer. Okay?
Thank you for the introduction, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As, as stated in the agenda, this is a request for review of a zone change, architectural and site review, and tentative map for a new townhome project on an existing three-plus acre site in the city of Gilroy. So the, there's, there's three actions before you, including introduction of an ordinance, and then waive reading by title only. The project is located at the end of Royal Way, between Royal Way and, and the Levy Trail. It's an existing vacant site that had been subdivided with several parcels and a large parcel rear which have remained vacant for, for all these years. It's designated for medium density residential development. This project is proposing medium density residential development. This site plan gives you a little bit of a bird's eye view of how the buildings would be laid out on the project. Of course, there's more detailed plans near Packet, but we have eleven buildings, including a couple of larger buildings near the rear, and then smaller buildings along Royal Way, and that provides a better interaction between the apartment buildings that are in this neighborhood. There's existing two-story apartment buildings throughout the, throughout the development, and this, this, this plan attempts to, to mimic that or integrate with that as, as well as it can while meeting the desired density in the city general plan. So this rendering gives you another bird's eye view, looking from Gilroy High School over the site towards the Levy Trail and towards the residential properties to the, to the east. As you can see, it's comprised primarily of two-story townhomes. The townhomes would face an exterior pathway that would wrap the site, so that pathway provides not just a nice place for the residents to, to gather and walk, but an additional buffer between the adjoining neighborhoods, including orientation toward the Levy Trail Park, which is something that we encourage in order to have interactive eyes on public spaces. So in summary, the project, it complies with all of our general plan policies and designations, our objective design standards and our zoning standards. The planned unit development is required in order to, one, allow for townhome development, and, two, to allow for a couple of minor deviations to the setbacks that are proposed for this project. There is a six-foot and twelve-foot side setback in a couple of areas to allow this building to orient on the site. Other than that, it complies with all other zoning standards, including parking. The project also qualifies as an infill exemption, so an infill exemption from SEQA is allowed for a project that's under five acres, that complies with the general plan, and that does not have any unique or significant environmental constraints on the property. This is a vacant site that has no, no unique environmental physical constraints and was previously approved for development in the past. We did do the required noticing for this project, including noticing in the paper, notification on site, mailing to residents within five hundred feet of the property before the planning commission meeting and before the city council meeting. We received several comments before the planning commission meeting that were addressed during their hearing. We received, prior to the agenda being published, we received another comment from Mr., I believe, Mr. Reed, a local advisory bicycle advocate. The same issues were brought up that were brought up for the planning commission, and then we've received a couple of comments from neighbors asking questions about the, the fence and other aspects of the development, including privacy and traffic. All those are questions that I'd be happy to respond to, either as, at this time, if the council wants, or after a public hearing, to see what other questions we might, might gather tonight. So in summary, the staff and planning commission recommend approval of the project. We've also included the requirement to provide eight-foot privacy fencing between the project and the, and the neighborhood, neighboring residential properties to the east, and some minor designer visions in the project as recommended by the, the planning commission. So our recommendation tonight is to introduce an ordinance by, pass a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading, introduce an ordinance of the council for the planned unit development amendment, adopt a resolution for a tentative map, and adopt a residue, resolution for architectural onsite review for the project. That concludes my presentation, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later in the hearing, and I believe the applicant's here as well, if you'd like to hear from him.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to council, and let's just answer questions that are asked here, okay? Right, Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Craig, thank you for the report. Just a couple of quick questions with regard to the project site and its relation to the trail there, because if you're up on the trail, you kind of go down that little hill and you, you see the space there. So it, it sounds like there, there will not be trail access from this site, is that correct?
That's correct. There's, there's not going to be.
No trail access there, and then the eight-foot fence that you addressed was for purposes of neighbors on the other side. Was there going to be any fencing between the site and, and the Uvas Trail there?
It'll be open, vertical metal fencing.
Okay, so similar to what we see further south on the trail, okay. Got it, okay, I think that answered my question there, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I do have a question.
Okay, well, let's, your question is for the applicant or for Craig? Okay, let's do questions of Craig right now, if that's okay?
Okay, I can do that.
Do you have any questions of Craig?
No.
Okay, okay, sorry, all right, I do. Craig, so my understanding is the, when it comes to where this wooden fence would be, okay, which is behind some of the residents on Antonio Court, that the other, the development side of that fence, so on one side of that fence are the residents, the existing residents, on the other side will be the front yards of these townhomes, correct? Not the backyards.
Correct, the front yards.
The front yards, and and no no roadway, just their front yard and a and a like sidewalk walking path. Is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct, this this site plan exhibit kind of illustrates that, but this would be a sidewalk path along here.
Yeah, it just, because that's unusual, I mean, it's unusual for a lot of what we see, it's not backyard to backyard.
Right.
Right, it's it's front yard, so you don't have the neighboring backyards right there against against the fence.
Right.
Okay, and that, some of the conditions of approval are for that eight-foot solid fence, right? And for, I see, twenty-four box trees to go in front of the second story windows of the homes that will be back there, and lastly, for increased daily watering to cut down dust from two times to three times. Okay, that's what I just wanted to confirm, all right, thank you. Okay, so if no other questions of Craig, then Councilmember Armandares, go ahead and we'll bring the applicant up, and you can ask your question there.
Sure. Thank you. I'm sorry, what's your name?
Hi there, my name's Dustin Boge. Madam Mayor, thank you for having us and counsel, appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dustin. So my question is, to encourage use of public transportation at other recent developments, we've asked for conditions or for the developers voluntarily to provide clipper cards and other things to their HOA for for residents, right, to get them used to or to incentivize use of public transportation. Is that something you'd be open to?
Yes, ma'am, great question, actually, so we have already agreed to provide a funding of a clipper card at the close of escrow for the first buyers and then subsequently provide language in the HOA that would, you know, provide annual funding for that same clipper card.
That'd be excellent, I know parking is really tough in that area, it's an impacted area, so I just think to to mitigate them, I I appreciate that, you know, you all doing that voluntarily.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, you you guys have actually requested and asked all the questions of my presentation, so for the sake of it being Monday before Thanksgiving, I'll be brief. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay, I I have one, am in the condition about the the good neighbor fence, can you just describe for the benefit of the the public or the neighbors that are here, specifically what you would what you would be putting in that would be structurally strong and durable, I guess is the word?
Yes, ma'am, so we have discussed an eight-foot redwood good neighbor fence that would be, would utilize six-by-six vertical posts and a pressure-treated kickboard, which is the board that runs parallel to the ground, that provides a little extra structure. It'll it'll be, you know, typical fences are four-by-four posts, so it's a pretty chunky structure. It should last a long time, and, you know, certainly, the interior portion is maintained by the HOA, so there'll be some extra maintenance there. There was a request by, we worked hard to talk to the owners and try to, the neighbors, and try to accommodate their concerns because, you know, rightfully, this has been open ground for a long time. I can remember riding my bike across it going to school. So I think it's, you know, it's important that we, you know, our commitments are heard and we're, you know, they're important to us, and so that's one of them, the clipper card's another one. We've also agreed to provide a bike rack standard that's something consistent with what you have at First and, before you get to First Street.
First thing, Kelton.
San Teresa, Kelton, is that what it is?
Yeah.
And, you know, we tried to tried to hear the concerns of the of the community and address them appropriately, and we'll live up to them.
All right, thank you, is there anything else you wanted to say since their staff did the report and?
Well, I, staff did a great job getting us here, we certainly appreciate that. We've been at it for a long time with Melissa early and Craig very much later, we appreciate all the work. And we worked with Bill Headley a lot early with parks, trying to make sure that we address, you know, the bike access and the trail and that we kept eyes on all the exterior perimeter such that it was both, you know, an attractive community and safe, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then seeing no other questions of council, I would like to open the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have six speaker cards.
Okay, wow, all right.
First speaker is Rodney Pickett, followed by May Valentino Pickett, followed by Rene Roca.
Okay, if your name was called, can you please come and sit in the front row?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Rodney Pickett. I live at seven one two Antonio Court. I wanted to start by thank thanking everyone who came to Royal Way, the townhome project, from our perspective. When we moved into the home, there was a home right behind us with a huge water tank, trees, wildlife, bats, stuff like that, and we didn't imagine that that would disappear. As I said in the planning meeting, I'm in construction, I know what it obtains, I know how that works, I know how lengthy a project could be, dust, noise, loss of privacy. So with the two two-story looking down into our home, you know, that's one of my concerns. I like to barbecue outside, I have a grandchild and a daughter who live in my home, and if you look from the perspective of the other homes looking in, in the evening, it's like a picture, it's like a movie, you could see right into my home if our curtains were open. So it's, that privacy is lost. I leave real early in the morning, like I said, I've been in construction in Union Carpenter for thirty-five years. So when I leave my home early in the morning, my concern is my family. And so having neighbors there along that fence line with that walking path is a concern to me. It's a concern to me now, it's open, it's a concern as I leave, I'm the man of the house. Obviously, it's uncomfortable knowing that there's going to be twenty windows or so looking down on us, so that's a concern again, and I know it's going to happen. The offset of the tremendous safety and privacy concerns I foresee is ongoing forever forward. The developers have made us a side deal of erecting a structure across the entire length of the back of our home. In my union, we have a brotherhood and we look look for each, look out for one another, and our word is our bond, and I'm and I'm trusting the developers are going to hold that, they're part of that bargain. When, with that said, I would, we'll support the project based on the side offer and hoping the city will apply the following conditions. We mentioned the fence, but what I didn't hear is on the bottom of the fence, maybe some bushes so that the dog-dog relationship would stop, because what happens when two dogs meet the fence, they go at it, and that happens a lot. So what we talked about was a bushes on the other side of the townhomes so that that could stop the dog-to-dog, because we have all the homeowners on Antonio Court, all have dogs. And of course, we talked about the twenty-four inch box trees, that would be awesome.
Sir, I'm I'm sorry, you're out of time.
No problem, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, all right, next speaker.
Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. I feel so fortunate to be living in Gilroy. Our small town essence is unmatched. I extend tremendous gratitude to all who have reached out to chat or made time to come by, beginning with the developers of Third Millennium Partners. It is because of the developer's side offer I have experienced a paradigm shift. I now support the Royal Town Homes Project. Their side offer will help lessen future difficulty of living somewhat exposed to so many strangers of lifestyle we haven't experienced, because our forever home was purchased under a different pre-existing condition. I haven't enough words to thank everyone involved, such as Dustin, Michael, and especially Terry, for their genuine responsiveness, as evident by their side offer. I mailed in all of this in our supporting documents, but I think it got kicked back out, we send it to you. I'm a lifelong learner, I have seen but a glimpse of what so many are tasked with. The interwoven necessities trying to balance it all is quite an undertaking. This board's insight has been invaluable. Heart-y thanks to those who have helped me learn, given me their time, and provided their expertise. I am enthusiastic, knowing the plans include extra sturdy eight-foot fence. For one clearly, my fear is that our dogs could be viewed as a nuisance. The dogs' experiences of this change will be ongoing, and it will be expressed by them barking or jumping on the fence, trying to protect their perceived area. I pray that we remain part of our family and not be identified as a problem for those who will walk the immediate sidewalk or our new nearby neighbors. Additionally, knowing the sizable trees, we'll need to stay in place for Building E, identified by the two-story windows. In our conversations, as a condition of approval, is an added sense of security when outdoors. I foresee fulfilled harmonious mitigations. My wholehearted thanks to everyone involved today, throughout this project and beyond, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Rene Roca, followed by Blanca Ramirez, followed by Dustin Boge.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you, please? Thank you.
I was at the planning meeting on October sixth, and there were some concerns about fire danger. I would like to to have access to the fire reports that were there so I can feel comfortable, because as you see off of Prince Valley, there's only two roads in, one road in and one road out, and I I don't see how fire engines and people trying to leave, it seems a little scary. Oops, I hit it away. But that, but more than that, the traffic, has there been any? I think I heard him talk about the traffic issues, that he was going to address it, because we have the Gilroy High School, and then we have people leaving ninety or more extra cars coming out of this facility trying to get onto Prince Valley. I don't know that there's any way, by looking at that map, that there's, you can get out to Tenth Street anyway. It looks like the only way in and out is Philbro or Imperial. So I'd like to see if any of that's addressed and how they, what their plans are for that. I'm not going to go into the fencing since they've already in good faith told us that they're going to give us the sturdy fences. My only other thing is the Santa Clara Valley Water Company owns a small piece back there, and early this, early this summer, they pulled out all the beautiful trees by the roots behind our houses, taking away all our shade and privacy for the pipeline project, which is needed, and we understand that. We got a, received an email from Jose Villarreal, Public Information Representative for the Santa Clara Valley Water Company, advising that they will be planting eight trees in January to replace the ones they've torn out. My hope is that this, that the Royal Way project is not going to again take these trees out as they seem to be located in the area proposed for the picnic area. It'll be up against the levy where they pulled them out. And I'm hoping that it, when they look, they'll check into that and make sure that that's not going to be a concern, that they'll have to cut them all down again. It looks like it's going to be in the back where you have, where the picnic area is going to be, which is directly behind my house. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Blanca Ramirez, followed by Dustin Boge, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Good evening, all. I mean, we've already discussed the whole fence with this whole water project that's going on. My concern is still my dog. They knocked part of my corner of the fence down, my dog got out, I was on vacation. We had had to get someone to get him out. And and that's my concern with the whole walk, the pathway that they have. I'm glad that we're talking about the sturdy fence, because it is an issue when you have people walking by the fence or, you know, just, I don't know how close that walk, that pathway is going to be by the fence. I just don't want to lose my dog, I don't want him to be barking either, and I don't want it to be a nuisance for anyone else. I mean, the whole privacy thing, it's an issue for me, all my windows face that direction. I have a young daughter at home, and I don't want to be sitting there knowing someone's staring right at me as I'm watching TV, because of all my windows facing that direction. So I'm hoping that these trees that they're planting or that the fence helps somewhat, but I I just need to know that I'm going to have some privacy. And then that this will help, you know, with the whole dog situation. Again, I don't, I I don't see how close that pathway is for the fan, by the fence, and so I still have that concern about people walking by and so forth. So maybe, I don't know, give me a better visual of of how, what the distance is. I just don't want to lose my dog, and I don't want to lose my privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dustin Boge, followed by Ron Kirkish.
You you can, you you actually don't have to be in this category if you want to wait and just respond to all of them.
Whatever is preferred. Yeah, because we probably don't have more questions for you.
Yeah, how about that, Dustin, yeah?
Hello, Mayor, council and community. When I looked at this, I'm not familiar with it.
The timer.
But when I looked at this, I don't see any parking for this facility. And it, does this fall under Councilman Hilton's desire to have no parking at these kind of living conditions? If it does, I think that it should be rechecked out. This is not something that I, I could be wrong, but I'm not seeing any parking for it, thank you.
Any other speakers?
No, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and yeah, no, I I understand, the applicant is not considered a public speaker, that's okay. So, closing the public hearing then at seven forty-six. Okay, and if you could please, yeah, come on up and address whatever you can address, and then we'll go to council again.
Yes, ma'am, again, Dustin Boge, the applicant. If I missed something, I'm going to go by memory here, please point it out. I think first, we, there's some discussion about the site agreement, I just want to memorialize it so that, you know, not necessarily specifics, but we agreed to fund pergolas for the neighbors to make sure that it helps obscure downward view into their houses. Let's, want to make sure to get that on record so that everybody hears that we're not trying to, of course, renig on that. I think, you know, our commitments again are very important to us. We will do our best related to shrubbery along the base of the fence, it's a moving path. It may not be available in all places, just with the distance, et cetera, but we will do our best. Related to parking, actually, we have two car garages. One is a compact stall in certain of the units, but two cars, along with two cars in the driveway, along with multiple on-street parking. And so, again, one of the, one of the benefits of staff and, you know, again, calling out Craig and Melissa and Bill, a long group of people, really orienting the houses to the exterior perimeter is that the interior becomes parking and travelway. And so I think from a functionality standpoint, it's a very highly functional project, especially in an area where there's a need for parking. I think we've probably all seen it, and so I think this will be additive to the equation, not detrimental. Did I miss something?
Do you want to address what valley water is, I mean, there should be no connection between valley water and your development, but for the benefit of?
Yeah, there there really isn't a connection.
Right.
It's a fair question, I, and just, you know, they're probably not the most political move here, but I think they've done a bad job communicating with the neighbors and doing what's right with the neighbors. I think they've made a pretty decent attempt at circling back around with the trees, et cetera. But in fairness, these folks have had their fences knocked down, they've had dogs loose, they've had dust galore, they've had trees removed they didn't count on. And for problems regardless of the community you live in, it's disappointment. And so, to you, to your questions, ma'am, that the trees that they're proposing are outside our development area, and so we would not anticipate knocking them down. And we'll have some communication with the water district as well to make sure that that is the case.
Thank you, because I was wondering, how could they plant trees on your private property? So it was, okay, right, all right, thank you.
I have, actually, no, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor, I think you answered all the questions, I commend you for working with the residents on on this, because I think you've addressed most, if not all, of the concerns. The one concern that I hadn't heard and wanted to ask you about was the concern about traffic issues, knowing the location and obviously the schools there, has that been addressed with the residents? Has that been addressed with the residents?
With the residents of our future project, or?
I think that gets addressed with staff. Yeah, traffic.
But I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's an infill site. So I'm, I'm going to put words in Craig's mouth, but effectively, the traffic analysis would have been done with the updated general plan. And just for record-keeping sake, when we purchased the property going on three years ago, it was actually, there was an allowance in the, the medium-density designation that allowed for single-family detached units. And it was effectively removed and upzoned as a result of that process that the city went through. And so, as part of that process, along went the traffic, et cetera. So it is exempt through an infill designation, if that is answering your question.
It does. Thank you.
Okay, stay there, because Councilmember Marks has a question for you.
Right.
No, it's not really a question. I just wanted to, I mean, I might have missed you saying this, but the one resident had a question about how far away the walkway was going to be from the fence. Do you want to address that?
It's pretty tight. It's generally a foot-ish. Maybe someplace, you know, I'm, I'm ad-libbing, just for the record. This is not definitive, but someplace between six inches and two feet, as it meanders throughout that area.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so councilmembers, do you have any other questions? I would like to ask that whoever's going to make a motion that it include, in the, in our, in our report, we already have the conditions of approval. And I would like the privacy one to include, to specify that this will be six-by-six posts for the fence, right? Instead of just saying an eight-foot solid, but that it be six-by-six posts, a pressure-treated kickboard, redwood, just as the applicant said it would be, but that in fact be one of the conditions of approval, so that they know.
I'll make that motion with the added conditions that you just articulated.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second then to approve. Now, hang on, we're doing item A, which is motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. So maybe that condition comes later?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I don't believe it works for this ordinance here.
So in this one, gentlemen, make a mo, for this motion? Okay, so made by Councilmember La Romano, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy approving a planned unit development overlay zoning amendment for property located on Royal Way, APN 790-44-93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 101, 109, and 110, Gilroy, California 95020, file number Z21-05.
Okay, so next would be a motion to introduce an ordinance of the City Council approving adoption of planned unit development overlay zoning amendment for property at Royal Way. Now, does this one need to include the conditions of approval, or is that the next one?
It will be the A and S.
The, the.
Ark and site.
Ark and, Ark and site.
Okay, so the fourth one. Okay?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Armendaris. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. And this, you need to read it, right?
No. This is now the, that was just in the introduction now?
Okay. Fine, so it says to have City Clerk read on that one, too. Okay, item C. Adopt a resolution. We need a motion to adopt a resolution approving a tentative map for forty-five-unit townhome development, TM 2104.
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Marks. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, and finally, is adopt a resolution approving an Ark and site review permit to allow construction of a forty-five-unit townhome project on the property, following approval of the associated PUD zoning amendment and tentative map, to include the conditions of approval with the change that I read earlier. Do I need to read it again?
No. No.
Well, that includes the change that I also stated, that they agreed to, with the clipper cards.
With the what?
The clipper cards.
Are you, in the conditions of approval?
Yeah. Is that where it belongs?
I thought it was already set. No.
I, I don't know. You, this, go ahead.
That's going to be part of the CCNR, so we wouldn't. Not yet. I, I was looking, it does, it does have a condition, Craig or Sharon. They do have a condition for CCNRs. I was looking for that.
Yes, with the tentative map.
Yeah.
There's a condition for that.
Okay, so those CCNRs.
It's already in there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already in there.
And then, and then I was just going to ask staff. For the A and S, there's a condition sixteen about fences and walls. Should we modify that one, or just add a new condition about fences? I think I'm in the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at that.
Yeah, it's page seven of the resolution, or, yeah. It says fences and wall, all fencing and walls are shown, are to be shown on construction drawings submitted for building permit. But I don't know if that's going to be enough for the type of fence.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for that. I, it, I would, I would say we're in that condition to include that, specify the fence. The intention was these conditions would specify the eight-foot fence.
Which they do. Right. I think it just would make the residents feel more secure if it specified also a six-by-six posts, and that, that it's redwood and that it's pressure-treated.
Right, I'm just having difficulty finding where I wrote that condition. But yes, that's the intention.
This one.
Well, you can just make sure it gets in there, right? I mean, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, do we need to find it right now? No.
But I, I would just say, I believe it's in there. Why don't we just include in the motion? If it's not, staff will rush it to put it in there.
That's what I, that's what I thought I did. Yeah. Joel, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so do we have, Councilmember La Romano, did you want to make that motion? And seconded by Councilmember Tovar?
Right.
Okay. So we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, A, B, C, and D are done. All right, nine point four. Adopt an ordinance. Adopt an ordinance adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Codes with Amendments. This is a follow-up from our last meeting. Sharon Goe is going to give these reports. And Sharon, if you could, like you did last time, consolidate nine point four, nine point five, and nine point six, and then we'll come back to each one individually with questions. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. At the last council meeting on November 7th, we presented the new building codes for adoption, including the REACH codes. So tonight will be the public hearing for the formal adoption of the building codes. And as you said, this item's gonna, presentation's gonna cover item nine point four, nine point five, nine point six, just like last time. And we created three ordinances, just really to have no cleaner, more organized, and easier to understand ordinances, because these codes are very technical. At the last meeting, we presented the co-adoption cycle and talked about the extensive public participation process that takes place. And in fact, Gilroy participates at the state level, because I chair one co-advisory committee and serve on another out of the six co-advisory committees, you know, for the Building Standards Commission. And at the last council meeting, we talked about the local adoption process for adopting codes by reference. So this is a slide that you saw last time. We have completed the first reading at the last meeting. We have completed the noticing requirements, and there were no changes to the ordinances from last time. So today is the public hearing to adopt the ordinances, including the local amendments, such as the REACH codes, as well as the findings. And as we mentioned last time, adopting these new codes, along with the local amendments, will ensure that buildings and structures in Gilroy will safeguard the health and safety for Gilroy residents and businesses. And these new codes with the local amendments will become effective on January 1st. So therefore, staff recommends that the council adopt the ordinances. And I did combine all of them here, since there were no changes from last time. And it's up to council if you want to do one at a time, or you could do all of them at the same time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. So now I'm going to go back to each one and ask for disclosure of any ex parte communications? No, on, on three, four, or five? Okay. Then I will go back to nine point, sorry, not three. Four, five, or six, I meant. Going back to four, I would open the public hearing. It's eight o'clock. Do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing at eight o'clock. Any other questions of staff on nine point four? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
So, second.
Moved by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Marks.
Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, and then on nine point five, opening the public hearing at 8:01. Any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Closing at 8:01. And looking for a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilmember La Romano, seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton? Oh, he's absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks is here. Councilmember Tovar? And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, nine point six. Opening the public hearing, it is still 8:01. Any comments, public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Closing at 8:02. And looking for a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Marks and seconded by Councilmember Armendaris.
Marks and Armendaris. Thank you. Councilmember Amadetis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Lider Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks? Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, takes care of all those. Thank you, Sharon. Unfinished business, we have none. And item eleven, does anybody need a break? Okay, then we're going to just, very, very briefly, please, five minutes or less, if you can. Okay? Thank you.
It was really refreshing.
Okay, can we please come back to the meeting?
It was really refreshing to see how the developer and the staff and the residents worked together. I like that. Appreciate that.
Okay, I think we have all councilmembers here. We are on item eleven point one. I guess I better make sure staff is back. Okay, he's here. Okay. Okay, starting up with eleven point one. Agricultural zoning districts and establishment of agricultural resource and open space uses, including beekeeping. Bryce, Bryce Atkins is going to give us the staff report.
I see, Mayor, Council. So as the mayor mentioned on this item, we're looking at the beekeeping and agricultural operations. So this stems from July 5th council meeting, where there's a public comment and a future council initiative item. Beekeeping, as we found, is not a simple matter as it seems on the, on the face value. So ultimately, it's an agricultural operation, more specifically, animal husbandry. So the intent is that you basically raise, multiply, possibly sell or give away bees for the use of pollination, and possibly as well honey. It is regulated by the state, national, and local governments. The local government being the county. It's also one of the few animals, not the only, where you actually want the animal to leave your site and forage. As, as mentioned, bees don't respect property lines. They don't care where they're going. It's operating off of natural functions, and can't be contained day-to-day like other agriculture-based animals, where they're kept in a pen or a crate.
Bryce, can you maybe speak a little more slowly or something?
Sure.
I'm having a hard time understanding.
So the, the key things are that beekeeping is an agricultural operation. Okay, it's a, it falls under animal husbandry, which is the intent to raise, multiply, possibly sell or give away for the use of pollination or honey develop, production of honey. It's regulated by the state, national, and local governments, with the local government being the county ag commissioner. It's one of the few animals, if not the only, where you actually want the animal to leave your property to go forage for food. So bees don't respect property lines. They can't be contained day, day-to-day like most of the other agricultural animals can be in pens or cages. Because of that, it's going to require significant public input in community meetings to pursue this, this route. The current code limits agricultural operations and all domesticated livestock and bees to agricultural zones only, with a limited exception, which is up to six small animals, mainly chicken, fowls, birds, and rabbits, in residential zones. It's important to note that the zoning ordinance prohibits animal husbandry in R1 zones. It does allow agriculture with conditional use permit, but not animal husbandry. And it's specifically called out in the zoning code that it is not allowed. Bees are included in the code for prohibition outside of agricultural zones. So we surveyed fifteen cities in Santa Clara County and noticed that thirteen of the cities do allow beekeeping, So we surveyed fifteen cities in Santa Clara County and noticed that thirteen of the cities do allow beekeeping, but also at the same time allow horses, goats, sheep, cows, and pigs in various combinations. They do put other conditions on there like lot size and other conditions regarding the property, but it is possible inside both residential and commercial zones as well. They also have further regulation in their zoning codes. But we noticed this trend that, that the two cities that don't allow residential beekeeping, Gilroy and La Pitas, are also the only ones that don't allow this combination of animals to be in the, in the regulation. There's some linking between those two. And before we delve any further and spent, you know, precious resource, we wanted to check back and see because there, there is this connection that's happening. And it may be likely, as, as mentioned in the next bullet point, is that once you permit one, it's really, there's really a pressure and, and an expanding interest in farming animals for others that may want, you know, other animals to be included in that listing, once beekeeping is approved. And we kind of see this with some of the public comments that we have. It's a slippery slope. So already, even the public comments and the written public comments that we received already cite the exemption allowing the small animals, six animals, as a basis for making a decision here that they didn't have any problems with it since 2012, so why not beekeeping? Well, you, we expect to see that also in the next one when somebody wants their 4H or FFA animal to be a goat project and bring it home to raise at home instead of trying to find another place for it. Well, you allow beekeeping, why not this? So what staff is looking at is that this really requires a comprehensive review of ag, of agricultural operations outside of the ag district for two purposes. One, to clearly establish, you know, what's permitted and what's not permitted as far as ag operations, non-ag districts. And also to prevent spotty or inconsistent regulation. So just as a surface level review of assessment for consideration, we have on the list here, and it's more fully described in the staff report itself, but these are some of the issues that, just at a cursory review, are things that we need to weigh in and evaluate when considering allowing ag operations inside any other zone aside from ag, ag district. These include, you know, sounds and smells, animal waste. But there's a couple of bigger ones. One is, you know, animals crossing properties. This is something that's more unique to beekeeping or more present with beekeeping as other animals will be kept in, like I said, in containers or of some sort fencing, whereas bees are actually, the whole purpose is that they spread out. We're also looking at for other animal uses, you know, the city's liability, what's acceptable, unacceptable types of agricultural operations, water quality issues, pollution issues. But one of the big ones that we have as well, and one of the causes for our recommendation, is the workload that's going to be needed to bring this to fruition and compare it to the other workload that we have. So we know that there's more issues that may be identified as this process continues. It's a significant workload lift that we have, and it's primarily going to be borne by the planning department. It essentially is a spoke on the wheel. Other departments will help, but ultimately it's going to be a zoning issue as we go forward. So if directed to proceed, we're looking at potential for some projects that will need to be postponed or canceled to grant the time to spend working on this. If directed, staff will turn to council recommended items for postponement or cancellation. But due to the workload for developing a comprehensive policy, staff is recommending not to pursue beekeeping and ag operations outside of ag districts. Again, the ultimate issue is that not the staff is opposed to urban beekeeping. What we're really talking about is a comprehensive review that's needed of the complexities around the issue, right? And having staff time and capacity to undertake that work, to do it effectively, to do it right from the outset. And staff feels that current staff time is just insufficient with, without reducing staff's focus on other projects and programs. As alternates, council members direct staff to pursue allowing the ag operations outside of ag districts. Again, as we mentioned along, it's a, it's a heavy workload, but it will likely require some sacrifice to other projects to buy that time essentially. There is no physical impact for the recommendation not to pursue it. Approval will impact staff time, so not specifically cash value, but that could potentially slow down in the planning side, some, you know, plan reviews of, that have revenue generation or user fees attached to it. So again, if, if directed to proceed, we'll, we'll come back with a full impact, a, a, a full analysis of the impact. But this time, staff is recommending not to proceed with the ag operations, including beekeeping, outside of the ag district. And that completes the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. All right, so if you have questions, well, I see your hand, Councilmember Tovar, but yeah, we've got the board. Okay, so Councilmember Marks, why don't you go ahead and ask your questions?
Yes, when I put this on the agenda, I did not have any intention of having bees stay with the other large animals.
Okay, we, we all put it on the agenda, right? It took, you requested.
And everyone approved it, put it on.
Okay.
But I'm having a hard time with this report because I don't see, by allowing bees, why we would have to allow donkeys and horses and pigs and goats. You know, if people came up to the council and asked to allow them to be part of, of, of living in a residential area, there's always that little magic word, no. It's, it's just not feasible because of all of the other considerations with the waste management and water, et cetera, et cetera. I was just thinking, you know, when I brought this to the council, that it could become part of our small animal ordinance, which is what, four point two three? And it would not be this big report, this big deal, where we have to give up other planning department projects to address this. I just feel like it's kind of gone over the top right now for this bee, the bee hives. And just, and we could certainly follow what some of the other cities have done, where it's just one bee hive per residence. You know, just keep it short, to the point, compact. My two cents. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Almendares?
I don't remember Councilmember Marks requesting this in an urgent way or attaching some kind of request to expedite a report back or a policy back. Did I miss that? Because this, this recommendation feels very much like, it feels really negative, and it feels like, like if we were pushing or we were asking for this to be passed through immediately or, like I said, in an expeditious way, that would impede on your, on your work time and, and force you to, to move other things around, right? And, and not do other reports or work that we've requested. I mean, did I miss something?
No, there's, so this was, again, introduced July fifth. And so we're, we're bringing it back now after we've done some initial analysis. But again, it's looking at the fact that this is something that's come before council for, for basically directed to come back. So we want to do that within, within a reasonable amount of time. And so, but as we looked at this, we want to report out our honest assessment about what's it going to take to actually deliver this. What we're seeing is the, as the conditions that are around beekeeping, not just beekeeping in this case. And so bringing that back and, and basically putting it, you know, apparently what our, our assessment, it's not apparently, but what.
Because you do say that, well, it, it seems like other cities do have policies around just beekeeping. And although it may be similar to or tied to, you mentioned that other folks wishing to expand the list of permitted types may also come before council to request these things, which we could deny, right, on an individual basis? And we could write a policy specific just to beekeeping, right?
Well, we can. Again, it just kind of creates that situation of, you know, the same situation you have with the small animals. Small animals was an exception to the normal code. So it's, it's just the, the awareness that there, that it will, may encourage others that when they see only dogs, cats, birds, and rabbits, common pet animals, and all of a sudden I have an agricultural animal now being permitted inside residential, it may encourage others to come forward and put that pressure. And so we just want to make that apparent that there is, this is a slippery slope as far as when do you draw the hard line.
Thank you.
Got it. Councilwoman Tovar, could I just respond? Okay, there's just two things that come to mind with both of your comments before we go on to new comments, and then I'll have my own too at the end. But with respect to looking at this as just bees, I mean, I liken this to when we were looking at flags, commemorative flags. And we were saying that, you know, when you get a request for one flag, then how do you address the other flags? You do have to look at things together and have some sort of policy. So with respect to other cities that allow bees, those thirteen cities that allow bees also allow many other animals that Gilroy doesn't. So those were considered, they didn't just allow the bees. And so that's, that's just something I want to point out and a part of what we're trying to get at. Because nobody's saying that there's anything wrong or bad about bees. It's just, how do you address all of that? Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Well, Mayor, I think you addressed what I was going to say, but let me, let me see if I can say it in my own terms. So Bryce, I mean, again, when we look at, you know, obviously, I, I know personally the benefits of beekeeping. Obviously, I have friends who do that personally. But I think when you look at, you know, sort of the, what other cities are doing, sort of the, the animal agricultural sort of ordinance here, you know? And I guess what concerned me, because you mentioned it five, six times, maybe even seven times, that working on this is going to sacrifice other projects, right? And that, that concerns me first and foremost, and I think goes back to Councilmember Almendares' question concern about are, are we fast-tracking this, it's going to sacrifice other things, you know? I was concerned about that. But going back to what just the mayor just said, if, again, if we're going to just do beekeeping, then what's going to happen when other folks come and want sheep, cows, pigs? I mean, could we not find it, an ordinance that sort of addresses all of that? That way, again, we have it all there and not having to come back four, five, six different times and spending all staff time. But I think there's a way to make this happen. But my concern is that, I mean, the benefits of, of doing an umbrella with all the different animals and not just one particular, which is what we're addressing here tonight. So I'm just trying to understand that, is where, if other cities incorporate all of it in their ordinance, isn't it beneficial for us to do the same?
It's beneficial as far as, as far as planning especially, right? So knowing exactly and having that discussion about what, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate? Where does council draw the line in different areas? Are there certain mid-sized animals, large-sized animals? There's a lot of discussion around that and a lot of planning, and that's the challenge is that, you know, at this time, we, we don't see present capacity for it without any sacrifices. And even in the long term with all the projects coming up that we see down the pipeline and as we approach, you know, the next several years, it's really going to be kind of hard-pressed, especially with all the other issues that you have with, you know, turnover in staffing and, and, you know, recruitment process. So it's, it's going to be a big workload and with those projects coming in, especially planning, taking the brunt of those as well, it's, it's a big lift.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
Bryce, did we do any outreach to the general public to find out how they felt about this?
Not for this item, no, not yet. It's still, it's still preliminary and early research, so we wanted to bring that to council.
Yeah, I think that's because the council hasn't said this is something to pursue yet.
Okay, and when I was looking at this, I would think that it would be different if you lived right next door to the person that's doing the beekeeping than living five houses down from them. Would that be correct?
That would be correct, especially if you're at the, at the location where the bee hive is. You could think of that almost like concentric circles going out as they forage out for, further and further to collect, you know, pollen and, and water nutrients.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Leromanios?
So Bryce, I, I didn't realize little bees like this were going to be so thought-provoking this evening. But yeah, I, I, I think some of the earlier comments about taking a comprehensive approach to, to, to any sort of plan or program that we have going forward makes a lot of sense, but I can also recognize it takes a lot of work. With regard to your, your discussion of certain projects are going to have to be put on hold, that's, is that because these, because this effort to come up with a comprehensive plan in and of itself, just drafting the plan, not anything afterwards, but just the drafting itself would take a good deal of time? Is that correct?
Correct. So it's, it's drafting the plan, it's doing the research, we're going to have to do community outreach inputs, get impartial experts in it, the ones that aren't advocating for it or opposed to it, try to get neutral, neutral scientific input. So there's, there's a lot of labor work in developing that policy.
Okay, so that, I think that gives me a much better sense, all the component parts you just mentioned about the expert's input, everything else. That certainly makes it clear in my mind how this can be a big lift. The other thing I just wanted to get to was, you know, I, I would assume, but I'd rather hear from you because you know more about this than I do, I would assume that a project involving bees, even just honeybees, involves a little bit more of some of the public safety kind of concerns than other types of animals. Is that correct in your understanding?
I don't know, it's more or less as much as it's different. So with, with bees, obviously, the, the big concern with them is allergic reactions to stings and, and anaphylactic shock. Also the fact that, you know, unlike other animals where there's barricades and fences to keep them in, bees are let out intentionally out into the community. Again, that's, I don't know that's any worsened mortality, that, that's something we'd have to look at as part of this process to find out what's, where's the city's liability also in this? Is it, you know, if we permit this, is there any additional exposure? Are there certain things that we have to have in there that, that help additionally protect taxpayers from having to pay out on claims or anything like that?
Got it. And doing that research is, of course, more of the work that you talked about for the lift. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm going to step in for myself before I go second round. Yeah. Yeah, and it's, the, the time is because what this, what we're saying is this would go into an, an agricultural use policy in the city limits. Because right now, we don't have one. The other cities that allow bees allow many more other animals too. And Gilroy has a very, very limited allowance for animals that are typically considered agriculture. Okay, so my, my, what I want to say is that I'm really grateful for people, for those who care for bees, who promote the good that bees do, who promote bee safety and try to educate everybody on, you know, how to save bees as opposed to harming them, what to do if you find, you know, a hive or, or a nest or what have you anywhere without killing them, you know, have somebody come over and try to save them. But I do not enjoy the company of bees in my own yard. And I have had my children's friends over who have had very bad allergic reactions. And so I, I have landscaping that is intentionally placed not to attract bees. And I put out bee traps because I can't have, once I saw that allergic reaction, that's not something that I want to live through again. So it's, the thing with bees, just giving my two cents here, is that they cannot be contained in the yards of those who love them. And when you, when you have acres apart like you do in the county, that's one thing. But when you're bringing them into city zones that are on 5,000 square foot lots and sometimes smaller or whatever, and you just don't know the neighbors, it, it is certainly something to consider. And so you would consider that as part of the overall use of all the animals that you decide to allow in your city limits. And it certainly would require a lot of public outreach because everybody should know that this is something that you're entertaining and not just certain people being aware. Okay, so Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, no, Mayor, I, I was trying to ask the same question. I think that the mayor and Councilmember Leromanios brought up. I mean, my discussions with residents and, you know, I, I think, and you mentioned it, Bryce, is sort of the city's liability when it comes to health concerns because folks I've talked to, they're very concerned about it. It's due to sort of, they're allergic to, to bees, whatever it may be. And how, how do we as a city contain that, right? I mean, and I think the mayor laid out perfectly there that, you know, if, if my backyard is right next to somebody else and I have bees and I can't contain those bees, right? So, I mean, I'm also concerned about the liability that might cause if, if, you know, it comes back on the city, so. Thank you.
Okay. So being through council then, I'm going to, I lost my agenda here. I think it's time to open the, open public comment. And we have speaker cards, yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have eight speaker cards. The first speaker is Mike Phillips, followed by Sarah Cudronelli, followed by Robert Weaver.
Okay, if you filled out a speaker card, could you please all come up to the front row so that we don't have to continue to, to wait for people to come? So somebody was already called first. Please.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council.
Clock should be in front of you, okay.
My name is Mike Phillips. I'm a wildlife specialist. I've been in this county forty-two years, twenty-eight of those years with vector control, their disease surveillance team, and wildlife unit. Out of my twenty-eight years with them, we had never had a bee problem when it comes to public safety, unless it was a hive, feral hive, that was in a city tree that had fallen down on public rideaway or breached sidewalk. When the mayor brought up that she puts bee traps in her yard, those are not for honeybees. They do not collect honeybees. Those are for wasps and yellow jackets, which are one of the number one insects that attack humans. They're the ones that cause all the anaphylactic shocks and so forth. So if everybody was worried about honeybees, you would have no vegetation in your front yards. You would not have these beautiful trees out here in the city of Gilroy because what do you think pollinates those? It's our native bees and our European honeybees. I have been brought into many cities to help write ordinances on beekeeping and backyard beekeeping. Morgan Hill, we just did. And when you talk about animals, you've got to remember, bees are not animals, they're insects. Wasps are insects, and they feed on insects. So things that are in your yards that attract these, the predators come in, which are the yellow jackets. Honeybees, when they're focusing on gathering their nectar, are not aggressive. They become aggressive when you attack their hive or when they're starving, when food sources have dropped. I work with the Gilroy Beekeepers Association on educating the public on beekeeping, how to be a proper beekeeper. I'm called out to this city numerous times to collect wild swarms, once in front of the fire station in their olive tree. Many on Seventh Street, Fifth Street, all over here. So we have honeybees throughout this area. So by saying no backyard beekeepers, what's the difference? You have feral hives anyway. But the ones in the backyard are managed. You can control their flight patterns. You can do a lot of things when it comes to honeybees. So I'll pass on to one of the other speakers.
Next speaker?
Thank you, members of the council and the mayor. My name is Sarah Cudronelli. I am the founder of Cudronelli Factory at Apeary's. I am also the vice president of the Gilroy Beekeepers Association, which I know is ironic. And I'm also the San Martin 4H beekeeping project leader. I work on education with the public and the community and go to our local schools to talk about the importance of bees and beekeeping. And I actually worked with Mike on that job at the fire station months ago in their olive tree. And again, what brought up, what Mike had said, you said traps. Traps are not for the bees, they're for wasps and yellow jackets. And most often, that's the number one reason why people don't like bees or afraid of bees is because they confuse them. They are not the ones that ruin our picnics, those are the wasps and yellow jackets. They are the carnivores. If anything, they actually eat the honeybees by taking out their heads and sucking out their insides for their protein. Whereas the bees for their protein, they go to find the nectar sources or the pollen sources from the flowers. That's not a carnivorous job. I feel insulted to find that the biggest obstacle for this moving forward is because it's going to, to provide a workload to our staff members with the city of Gilroy. I find that very offensive that that is the reason why this is not to be considered. Like we said, you can adopt ordinances or work off existing ordinance from neighboring cities, one which is only ten minutes away. I find that that would be beneficial. I don't find that that would be extra work that would be initiated when you, let's just say, I'm a firm believer of not reinventing the will. I believe in keeping it greased and working off the technology. So if those ordinances are already adopted and written, we don't need to have a task. So if those ordinances are already adopted and written, we don't need to have a task force. Speaking of task force, we didn't need a task force to tell us that, per se, that COVID ruined our children's education. You could have asked a parent. That's a sidetrack. Also, I want to say that if this is something that the citizens feel that is important for us, then it is our council members and our city's staff jobs to pursue this because that is what your community wants. I would also like to say that Jane brought up earlier that collaboration is so important. So collaboration in beekeeping and being backyard beekeeping and running that ordinance is not a collaboration with just your community members. It's also a collaboration with our humanity and with our bees for sustainability, for long-term growth with our food crops and other floral environments that we have for the viability and sustainability for humankind, not only just beekeeping. We're not beekeeping because we think it's a cool thing or that it's fun. Beekeeping is something that you have a passion for and you see the importance for it long term. When you can reward yourself with seeing the things that the bees do and how you can provide for them, you're actually bringing a more diverse thing. And finally, I will let you know that bees have a higher survival rate from being in urban areas because of the rich diversity, whereas in rural-
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert Weaver, followed by Gurman Wanhawa, followed by Stephanie Ali.
Well, good evening. I'm gonna take a different tact on this. I'm not gonna necessarily talk about bees. I'm gonna talk about the staff report. When I read this, I was surprised. It felt like it was putting you folks under duress that if you approved this measure as presented tonight, we would have barnyard Armageddon all over Gilroy. That's not the case. We have a legal system that's based on laws and rules, but it also includes people such as yourself who can make rational decisions. And when the law can't distinguish between a cow and a honeybee, you can. And what you can do tonight is have two votes. You take the honeybee out of that menagerie barnyard group, put it in its own special category, and then vote on the measure without being under duress that you're gonna have cows and pigs living next door to you if you go that route. And staff will then be freed up so that they have more time to devote to all of your projects rather than trying to figure out what the law can't tell you is a honeybee is different from a cow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gurman Wanhawa, followed by Stephanie Ali, followed by Gandhi Chavez.
So my name is Gurman Dava and me and my father are also part of the Gilroy Bee Association. And like my fellow speakers have said, allowing bees doesn't necessarily allow sheep. Bees are, in quote, from the California Department of Food and Agriculture, bees perform a critical function. Many crops in California are dependent on the bees, on the state's estimated 740,000 domestic bee colonies excluding the wild bees. So just looking at the domestic bee colonies that we keep in our backyards and boxes that we maintain, they perform a very critical function for our food, things that bring like food to our shelves safely, our grocery stores, and just like our personal crops at home. If you grow, have a garden, nothing will grow unless you have bees. And these beekeepers, domestic beekeepers, they allow that to happen. And also, you guys were saying like how neighbors will be affected by this. Unless your neighbors have very attracting flowers or like a water source, your neighbor likely will never see bees in their yard. And even if there's flowers there, you won't have a swarm of bees like impacting, not allowing them to go outside. You'll have a few graceful amount of bees that will not be aggressive and you'll be able to go outside freely and the bees will leave you alone as long as you leave them alone. And bees are not an aggressive stingy insects like wasps and yellow jackets are. So that's the major difference. Yellow jackets will chase you down, will mess with you at picnics, take your food. But bees will gracefully leave you alone and they're non-aggressive and they try much as possible not to sting you because that means death for them. And that is the major points.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Stephanie Ali, followed by Gandhi Chavez, followed by Cheryl Parks.
Hello again, Madam Mayor and Council. So you've already heard me in July and my feeling about bees and I agree with, of course, the other speakers. One thing that Sarah did not identify in her long list of accomplishments is that she is a master beekeeper recognized by the state of California. So she is an expert on bees. And it's hard to find an impartial expert on such a topic. People who are impartial usually don't get an expert opinion on something like this. I've been to a lot of council meetings where we've talked about public enjoyment of our property, what people can and can't do. And I just want to say that, you know, bees don't smell, unlike my neighbor who smokes in his backyard. And they don't bark all day like dogs do. They're very quiet. I also don't find bee poop while I'm in my garden, but I do find a lot of cat poop. They don't, you know, cats, they don't respect anything. They barely respect their owners. They definitely don't respect boundaries. And I love cats and dogs. You know, I was disappointed about reading the staff report. I know the staff works very hard. I wasn't disappointed about their recommendation, per se, but the content. Hundreds, possibly thousands of cities worldwide have figured this out and I think we can too. I am for, you know, people pursuing their passions and I'm also for regulation. So I welcome that. And I think that the city council members here can use common sense governing on this issue. And I look forward to hearing what everybody decides. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Gandhi Chavez and I'm here to speak in support of allowing beekeeping in the city of Gilroy. Prior to the meeting, I took off this bee identification. I gave it to the clerk here so that you would be aware of what is in your landscape. And I use this as an example for education. In your document, I quote, "Some farming animals such as bees will require travel to other areas to forage." And it goes on to state that it will breed conflict between property owners and create disagreements with the city for permitting them. And I couldn't disagree more with that last statement. I was born and raised in Gilroy and I'm here to tell you, honeybees, bees, including native species, have been living and currently are living in our city. We see them in our home gardens and community landscapes, foraging, collecting pollen and nectar to feed their young and themselves with the inherent design to get to their homes safely. One of the hardest concepts to convey to the many children I have taught as an educator in this community is that when bees were foraging in the grass on clover or in the trees lining the area located near our classroom, they were not in the area looking for someone to sting. Thus began a rich dialogue, curiosity and appreciation for all living things that we share space with. I'm a bit emotional about it because my first graders used to sit on the asphalt and observe the bees. And there's nothing more magical than seeing children of any age engage in that kind of experience. The decision to manage a hive as a beekeeper is not taken lightly. It is inherent to education, safety, responsibility, respect and stewardship of the habitat and environment that supports pollinators and the living things that are in our community. And it is my hope that this council will approve beekeeping within the city limits. And I agree with the council member that said that this report appeared negative. I felt that it was not well-developed and that did not include all sides of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have this, you will have this, so you will be able to go home and identify.
Thank you.
What you have in your yard.
Cheryl Parks, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Gilroy has a rich agricultural history. Back in the 1800s, we once grew so much tobacco, we were the cigar capital of the world. And as we all know, in the 1900s, before we became the garlic capital of the world, we were the prune capital of the world. Gilroy truly is the land of sunshine, fruits, flowers, gardens, and I believe we need to embrace who we are. Other cities that aren't as rich agriculturally have in the Bay Area, in Santa Clara County, but Gilroy can't. Other cities can figure it out, but Gilroy can't. To me, that makes no sense. Bees, honeybees, besides honey, they support community pollination. Bees give us better yield for our gardens, our orchards. And full disclosure, I'm allergic to bees. I'm also known as the flower lady, the garden lady of my neighborhood. I love seeing the bees in my hollyhocks and my gardens. And I know it's anecdotal, but I've never been bothered by them. I raise my kids, you know, honeybees. If you don't go after them, they're not gonna go after you. So I'm for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening again, folks. First of all, Gurman, you did a great job, buddy. And I think we have a Harvard lawyer here. You should talk to him. I fully support this beehive issue. I have a maple tree, Japanese maple tree. And during the time it's flowering or whatever you call it, the bees are humming like crazy in there, but they've never bothered me. It's the doggone yellow jackets that do, okay? I've never been bothered by a bee, but then I don't go out of my way to bother them either. And then I have tons of tomatoes, zucchini, cucumbers, lemon, limes. And I've got plenty of stuff in my backyard and I want those bees. And when I don't see them, I get kinda upset, concerned. So I probably would never put a beehive in my backyard, but if my neighbor had one, I wouldn't care. And the reason why is because when I lived in San Jose, in my first home in South San Jose, my neighbor across the street had one. He was a Mormon guy. And if you know Mormons, they have to fend for themselves. They have to grow their food. And he was a great guy. And he had a beehive and he had raised beds out there. But I also had vegetables in my backyard then too. So I benefited from his beehive. So I'll keep this short but sweet, but I do think this is very good. And again, your son did a great job, buddy. Thanks.
Okay, is that, do we have more?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we just have this last speaker card.
One more, okay?
I think a lot of this is driven by fear. I think the cows come in, the horses come in, the smell comes in, and it's not related to the bees, it's related to fear. I can tell you myself, I was afraid of bees. My daughter is a third-year vet student, definitely afraid of bees. We've had bees in our house for seven years now. Why did I start? We're losing million hives a year. I read that. Some heroic who's not here was selling his honey at the corner, stopped, asked, hey, how can I help the bees? Come to the Gilroy Beekeepers Association meeting. Came here, I've had a beehive, used to shake when I used to work with my bees. I don't wear gear around my bees. There's nothing to be afraid of. They're a clean, clean insect. We go into their hives, within a minute, they're cleaning their hive. And you can watch it, soon as you leave the hive, they're cleaning out the mess we created, going into their hive, breaking it down, and they're cleaning it within minutes. Within minutes, they don't poop, they don't do their business in their hives, they fly out and do it. They're just a clean, clean insect. That is very misunderstood and people are just afraid. I work in the city of Mopitas. I have employees that go to every house every day. Do Mopitas residents have hives? Absolutely they do. The reason I know is I get excited every time I see a beehive. Every time I see a bee, we pet bees in public just so we, people aren't afraid. Just so people see that you can move bees around, they're used to it. There's, you know, 10,000 of them in the hive and they push each other. They're used to being pushed around. And it's just humans, we just do a lot more of it. There's a reason that we're losing million hives a year. It's because we're afraid of them. It's one of those Hollywood killer bee stuff. They don't sting, like you said, it's a death sentence for them. They will sting to defend. If I go into their house, just like if somebody came to my house unannounced, they're gonna ask me questions. And they give you plenty of warning. They come bump your head, bounce off, as long as you leave, you're good. I know my time's running out, but there's beekeepers here in Gilroy now. I'm sure they have bees in their house. And there's plenty of wild bees. Let's not be afraid. Everybody mentioned, there's plenty of cities that have ordinances already. Let's take one of theirs and see if they have goat problems or bee problems or how many bee stings has caused problems here throughout the whole state.
Thank you, sir. Out of time, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Romanos, if it's all right with you, I'd like to read from the, okay. Yeah, I just want to read, because we did, we got a lot of comment letters and I'm sure we, you know, read them all. And there is a paragraph at the bottom of the expert's email that says, "Bee Warning Reminder. We work with live honeybees. Honeybees are stinging insects. And while most stings do not require medical attention, a small portion of the human population can develop a life-threatening allergy. If stung, immediately..." I only read that because I have been stung by a honeybee and I was just laying out in my backyard. And you know you've been stung by a honeybee because they do die afterwards. They're crawling, they don't fly away. And the experience I had with my son's friend, and this doesn't mean that you can't have honeybee hives. I'm just saying that one person's opinion and comfort zone in their own home is not necessarily the same as another's. And we are talking about everybody being able to enjoy their own home. And so my son's friend, it was also a honeybee because the bee was there. You could see the bee. So if I was putting out traps thinking I was helping that, clearly I was not then because those traps are only catching a different kind of bee. But I'm just trying to say that public outreach would need to be very big in this. You can't say that the community wants based on who's sitting in this audience today. That's not the community. That's not representative of our entire community. We have people here interested in this particular subject tonight who were forewarned about the subject and know that it's here. So of course, we can figure this out as a council if this is the direction the council wants to go. But the reason it is an undertaking is because it does require that community outreach and to look at this holistically. So that means we have to then look at staff and prioritize what is it we want them to do first. It's not that we can't do it, it's that a majority of the council has to decide whether or not we are going to do it and then we will determine in what order it will come. That is how any city would go about it. So those are just the comments I wanted to make since there was a lot spoken to things that I had said. And I'm just gonna stick with my personal feeling is I would be very uncomfortable because I am uncomfortable living near bees. And I'm sure there are those who do and there are those who don't. And it says nothing- And it says nothing about anything bad about bees, they're wonderful. Okay. Councilmember Lormenos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all the speakers. Again, I'm, I'm learning more about bees than I ever thought I would.
I know.
On a Monday night in late November. You know, the way I'm, I'm looking at this issue here, for me, it's, it really is a question of resources. And this is, you know, I, I fully appreciate and understand how important bees are to the ecosystem, the importance of pollination, and fully recognizing that a lot of our bees are disappearing. And so that is, that is a big ecological problem that needs to be addressed. But I did want to, I did want to address one thing before I have a follow-up question for Bryce, and that is around the report itself. And there were some comments about this being a negative report. Now, I, I just want to remind people that city staff has a lot that they have to do, and we have to serve a lot of different interests. And it doesn't necessarily mean they don't care about one interest versus another, but they have to find a right balance with limited resources. So when we say that, you know, report was negative, or that they're trying to do it, city staff, I mean, they, realistically, they, they kind of operate on what we direct them to do. So it's not like they come in here with an anti-bee bias or anything like that. They have to make tough decisions. You know, we only have so many resources, we only have so much time, and there are a lot of competing interests, and they're, a lot of times, they're all good, you know? So, so it's not that we're, it's not that anyone on the, on the staff side, I think I feel comfortable in saying, no one on the staff has a, a bias against bees. So let me just put that out. I, I don't think it's a negative report. I think they're trying to be realistic and just saying, look, this is going to take resources. But with that, Bryce, let me ask a question. With regard to some of the comments that we heard, we heard about templates, we heard about following other city examples, something that might help us to avoid reinventing the wheel here in Gilroy. Is that something where if we were to follow an example like a Morgan Hill or other cities, that we would be able to move this along a little bit faster, recognizing that we still have to do the outreach and things like that?
We can use it as a template and guidance to the topics that we need to do, but ultimately the, the issue with the ordinance is that it'd have to be tailored to Gilroy, right? Even when you look at the, the conditions and the ordinance for other cities, they're different. There's, there's a lot that are, there's a lot of similarities with it, but there are some that have differences within them. So it's tailored to Gilroy. So we can use it as a, as a baseline template, but it still has to be crafted to what council and the community want, within their community, and unique conditions that we may have that other communities may not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Armendaris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I reread this report and stuff, I, I do feel like it was biased, you know, Councilmember Lormenos. Not that staff is biased, I think that they do deal with a very heavy workload and, you know, always do a stellar job for us, and, and how they present information, and, and I think here we missed the mark, because I don't see anything positive in terms of the benefits of bees, of templates that we could use from other cities, right? I just, I just feel like a lot of barriers were put up, or obstacles, rather than a balanced approach. But given that, I still appreciate the work that our local beekeepers do. I appreciate being able to, you know, this weekend, we picked walnuts and pomegranates and persimmons with my grand niece, or my great niece, of plants and, you know, fruit trees that my grandma planted, you know, 50 years ago, right? Nopalas and tunas and all that good stuff, you know, and it's not because migraine thumb, but because of the bees and their hard work, right? To keep, to keep us fed and to keep our, our planet alive and sustainable. So I think that beekeeping, urban beekeeping is well worth the work it would take for staff, you know? I don't necessarily think it's something urgent that we need to pursue, but I, I think it definitely merits the time and effort of our city to put into creating a bee-specific policy for, for urban beekeeping. That's what I'll, I'll be motioning for.
Go.
Yes. I live right down the street from a cherry orchard, and they have the big bee boxes out there all the time. And the bees don't bother me. They come and they do their thing and the flowers, and on they go to the next one. And I don't believe that this is going to open the door to people wanting cows and pigs and all this in their backyard. And I don't believe it's going to open the door to a mass beekeeping population here in Gilroy. I don't think there's that many that actually do this as a hobby. So I, I doubt people will even notice it, because the bees, they move around, they, they don't attack one yard and stay there. And, and I believe that there's a lot of misconception about the yellow jackets, because I get those in my yard sometimes, and those you want to run from. But I, I would like us to go one step further and have a, a public information campaign of, of the importance of bees, and for people not to use pesticides and killing the bees off. You know, we don't, we, we don't have all the natural things that used to take care of aphids and stuff like ladybugs and all that. Never see a ladybug anymore because of all the pesticides. So I'd like to see us do something about that, too. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
I agree with Councilmember Armendaris, I, I felt like she did when reading the report. I was very taken aback by it, because I wanted to hear how we could take the bees out of the large livestock category and put them in with the small animals or one of their own. And for those of you that are not very, you know, comfortable around bees, read the book, Secret Life of Bees. That was just a fascinating book, which made me have a whole new perspective towards bees. And even if we do not allow beekeeping in Gilroy, that doesn't make anyone any safer from getting stung by a bee in your backyard, because we're not getting rid of every bee. And I don't think the public really understands the number of beekeepers we actually have right now, today, in Gilroy, with hives in the backyards with absolutely no problem. So I still would like to support, you know, us delving deeper and forgetting about the large livestock, because I don't think, hopefully, common sense would prevail, that we would not have people coming in wanting to have large animals in their small backyard. And I think we have the common sense to say, no, that's not practical, but to have beekeeping hives is practical. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the, all the folks that commented tonight, and thank you for the education lesson. I truly, truly appreciate that. Prior to this meeting, I had discussions with a couple of council members, trying to understand sort of the bees and how everything works, and I was on the fence on this, you know? And obviously, as I mentioned earlier, I have friends who are beekeepers. But to the young man who came up here earlier, you convinced me, you truly did, so I want to thank you for that. And I think we have an opportunity here. The biggest concern I had was obviously the, the number of times that was mentioned about taking away from other projects, you know? As Councilmember Lormenos said, I mean, we do have a lot of projects, but I think what you're hearing from a lot of other council members, we can find that, that, that common ground, you know, to make this happen. So I, I am going to vote in favor of it, and I, again, I want to thank, thank you all for, for your comments. Yeah.
Okay. Jimmy, you want to say something?
I like bees, too.
I know.
I, and. Love bees. I even, I even watched the bee movies numerous times when my kids were little, you know? But seriously, I, I want to kind of be very open about this and why that staff report was written that way. This has nothing to do with bees, to be honest with you. And as the, you know, as the city manager, I feel that there's a point where our workload comes to a certain apex, that we have to tell council, we can't do this right now. And that's basically what I'm doing. And I'm going to tell you why. We have six planners in our planning department. We have had four vacancies for a good part of this year, we are down to two. So I'm down to 33% of the staff. We submitted our housing plan to the state of California late. So we're struggling. So maybe there could have been a little more articulate way to say, we're struggling, and we don't want to do this right now, but it's not that we don't want to do it, we can't do it. If I, if I, if I get direction from council to say that we're going to do this right now, and we're going to do this, and that, something is going to stop being done. And that's just the fact. So I'm going to bat for staff here a little bit, but I also understand, I, I, this, this is a great idea. There's nothing wrong with this idea. There's a lot of work to be done, in my opinion, because the only thing, you know, bad legislation creates bad policy, creates bad regulation and bad enforcement. And we've learned that the hard way on numerous things. So that's the negativity you're seeing a little bit in the staff report, that we're not saying we don't want to do it, that we're against it, we just want to do it right in the way that we've learned how to do it. And that's probably in a little bit conflict with being ex, you know, being fast about it. So if you felt attacked in the staff report, that's on me, I understand that, but you got more of the symptom than the cause. So with that being said, we are very open to this, we are very open to going through a process, but I do not have, I do not feel confident in our ability to do it right at this time.
Jimmy, what would you propose then in terms of a timeline? Like, how can we, how can we balance this out so that staff isn't given an undue load or time constraints, right? And things don't fall off that are also important?
Right.
Like, what do you, what do you think we can do?
I have a couple of thoughts. And one, there was the comment about why did this come back so quick? We start getting asked about these things, we start getting, so we're not doing anything about it. So we get kind of a little bit of pressure and a sense of urgency to, you know, to move, or at least to get it in front of council. And, and so I would suggest that council starts the strategic planning in January, and we will add to the list of legislative items that you did two years ago. And we've gotten through almost all those, there's a few we haven't. And so I would like at that time for council to weigh in and say, you know, we know we need to do this, this is the stuff that we know we'll get to in the next two years. And then there'll be a point at that end of that process where we'll look at each other, and you'll be like, Jimmy, can you do that? And I'll be like, yes. That's the process I would like to see us go through. And I understand that people would want this right now, but to me, that would be a lot better way to weigh it into everything we're doing, because we, we have to accomplish the things we're required to do, like a housing plan and things like that, and we're not finished with those things yet. So I would like council to see that order where this could fit in.
No, no, no. We don't, we don't take, we don't take speaking from the floor, I'm sorry.
I do have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
What?
No, this is not public comment time.
This isn't.
And it's not a public debate, so please.
We didn't let you speak, you just spoke. So, right, okay.
My question would be then, if someone continues to beekeep between now and when we have a policy, what, I mean, they're not going to be subject to any fines or citations, anything like that? Is that true?
I, well, one, we would treat it like any other agricultural use. And in my time here, I've never, I've never witnessed an agricultural abuse report. So I think that would be very remote. But one of the things that I think we were able to do a lot of times is to work with folks in knowing that we don't have the policy that we need in place. And so I think we can make it a commitment that if there was an issue with beekeeping, which again, I like bees, we would work at that in a common sense approach.
Okay. So Mayor, could I have motioned to put this on the agenda for the strategic planning meeting? Or how could we make that fit?
Well, so if that wants to be, if, if that is how you would like to proceed, you would see if there's a majority of the council that would like to discuss this, that strategic planning, although I don't know that you need to do that, because that strategic planning, can you not just bring up anything?
I get to bring up anything I want.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not necessary. At strategic planning, you can bring up anybody, I have a list of things that I plan to bring up, and then we'll all be voting on what's the priority.
Can we do that thumbs up?
So I'm just saying it doesn't matter. You, you, you'll, you'll bring it up then, you don't have to do that.
I think I'd feel more comfortable, yeah, I'm making it formal tonight, and then working out the details.
Okay, well, you'll be there at the strategic planning meetings.
Right, right.
Okay.
Can I, Mayor, can I ask the city administrator a question?
Yes.
Jimmy, in regards to, and again, I, I hear the concern regarding the bandwidth, obviously, of staff. And again, I, I, obviously, as I mentioned, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of this, obviously, I'm not looking at it to be tomorrow, you know, and I think that's what most of us are saying here. But when we talk about sort of the lack of staff, isn't this the type of stuff that we can contract out if we don't have enough staff members? You know, I mean, again, I, I'm trying to see how we get to that.
For a policy? For the beekeeping policy, you mean?
Right, right. I mean, well, I mean, just in general, I mean, I'm talking about, again, going back to it sacrificing a lot of different projects, you know? I mean, if, if, if this is a project that we all decide, or the majority decide we want to move forward with, then instead of saying we're going to lose other projects, and we start contracting, you know, some work to, to help us keep those projects intact, I mean, that's, I don't know, if that's something that you thought about, Jimmy?
If there's templates available, though, I think.
Okay. Yeah. Is that, that's a question for you, for you, I guess?
I think that's possible, but we, we currently contract quite a bit of the things that we do, including, you know, the city's, you know, housing plan and such, and that does require staff to manage that, RFP contracts.
The Jedi thing we just did? Right?
Yeah. We did outsource the Jedi, you know, so yes, it's possible.
Okay.
But I, I, again.
It all falls in within the budget, whatever we, we budget. So that's why I'm saying, however you want to try to formalize, if you want to try to do a thumbs up thing for what to discuss, I just, I'm saying that it doesn't, all it takes is the council member to raise it at the strategic planning meeting.
Well, I would like to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay. This isn't a motion item, though. It's just direction.
Direction.
This is, it's not, it's not on the agenda as a, as a motion, this is just something that was coming back for discussion.
Right.
So that's why I'm saying it's, if you, the most formal thing.
I would like to ask staff then, I would like to ask us to direct staff to pursue a policy, be specific, bee with two E's, regarding urban beekeeping in, in the city of Gilroy.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Is that the same as discussing it at strategic planning? That's not what I heard either. That motion was not to discuss it at strategic planning.
Well, I'm, I'm motioning that we direct staff to, to pursue something like that.
Even though it means something has to come off their plate.
So that.
Okay.
During the strategic planning, just to formalize it, right? And then we can discuss where it will land in terms of their work plan during the strategic planning.
So, okay, so you're asking that staff make a point of including this item on our strategic planning agenda for discussion?
Sure. Yes.
Is that better? Okay. Okay. Okay, the first, yeah, the first way it was worded sounded different, so that's fine. Okay, so that's the direction. So there's going to be a thumbs up? Okay. Yeah, it, it, there's, there's a majority. That means we are now at item 12, which is city administrators' report. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mad, thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to, a couple of things here just for House claiming. I would ask the city clerk to give council an update on election results timelines, if you could, please, time?
Yes, Mayor and council members, I just wanted to let you know that the ROV has informed me that the results for the November 8th, 2022 general municipal election will, the results will most likely be available on November 8, 2022.
On November?
No, I'm sorry, December 8th, 30 days from the election. So it's December 8th.
December 8th, okay.
Yes, that, which is going to be after the December 5th city council meeting.
Right.
So then we would then.
So that means.
Install the new city council on December 12th?
Right. So we won't have official results by the December 5th meeting? That's what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And second, I, I want to ask Captain Smith of our police department to talk a little bit about what they're working on with the cats.
Yeah.
I feel horrible for people that have lost their pets, I'm a pet owner. And I also want to make sure, though, that this is not an opportunity, you know, for a lot of Q and A, because we don't have all the information maybe that you have, but if, most of you know how to find us, please drop me an email, and we'd be happy to talk to you, or come out, or whatever. But I'm just going to, I just ask Captain Smith to kind of tell you what they know and where they're headed, and what, what they can do about this.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I want to thank the speakers for coming up here and talking about that. It's not an easy thing to talk about, and it's, appreciate you coming up and speaking. So I had the opportunity to research some of our calls for service. And I also had the opportunity to speak with our animal control officer. And one of the things we do is we funnel all our animal calls through one person. So we have somebody that can identify trends and somebody that's familiar with that specialty. So over the last several months, I'm sorry, I don't have specific dates, there's three calls for service that we were able to investigate. The first one was a few months back where a cat was shot and killed by a pellet gun. We also received a few weeks later a call of suspected burned animal remains in a bag. And next to that was a raccoon. And lastly, about a week ago, was the call about the kitten that was mentioned earlier that suffered the injury and had to be unfortunately euthanized. No other documented reports that I know of. And a lot of the information that was shared tonight was new to me. And I just want to take a moment and clarify a few things. Number one, there's been no arrests for any of these mentioned cases. There are no suspects in those cases. And there's no evidence that an unhoused person or persons were responsible. I can tell you, the police department takes all calls of animal cruelty very seriously. It's a felony. And I encourage anyone with information about any of these type of cases to contact the Gilroy Police Department. And I'll make myself available after the meeting to talk with anybody in the audience that has a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Captain Smith. The last two things I have, as I wanted to reiterate, thank you, everybody, for coming out to Arbor Day event on 11/16. Not only is that good, we planted 12 trees, but that is a requirement for us to keep our Tree City designation, which Gilroy has been one for 41 years. And so thank you to everyone with that.